Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am so humbled to serve on this first day of Black History Month, African-American history, or however we want to present ourselves. We're so grateful to be here. Shall we pray? Eterno God, our Father, we come before your presence, knowing that you are God, and God all by yourself. We know that you sit on the circle of the earth, and that everything is under your control, your auspices, and your authority. So therefore, God, we beseech you now to be in our presence. God, we ask now that you forgive us for our sins and our transgressions against you and anybody else on today. God, we come to say that we thank you for life, for health, and for breath. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and to serve our city on today. Now, God, as we come together, we pray now that there would be no aggravation, irritation, or frustration. We pray for these members who have come together for our city to guide and to lead. We pray now that as they engage in this business, that you would be with us and be with them. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for public comments. Mr. Clark.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for all pneumatic review. The first speaker today is Sean Estelle.
Good morning. My name is Sean Estelle. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm currently serving as a volunteer elected leader of Chicago Democratic Socialists of America as the campaigns coordinator. Five years ago, I was made aware of the upcoming renegotiation of the franchise agreement between ComEd and the city by Alderman Rosa. Along with a team of other volunteers, we quickly learned as much as we could about the previous franchise agreement process, when then-mayor Daley was able to successfully leverage enough funding from ComEd in order to create and staff the original Department of Environment, based on monetary concessions through threat of municipalization, and devise a campaign strategy to democratize ComEd, calling for municipalization, a shorter franchise agreement, a progressive rate structure for businesses and individuals, and other elements that could push towards short- and long-term benchmarks, towards a future of serious mitigation and adaptation to the climate crisis, a once-in-a-lifetime chance for Chicago to be a true climate leader. All of this occurred in the context of the 2019 electoral cycle, when huge upheavals and realignments occurred, thanks to the electoral victories of DSA-endorsed candidates Carlos Ramirez-Rosa, Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez, Jeanette Taylor, Byron Sigcha Lopez, and Andre Vasquez, and many other first-time challengers like Daniel Laspada, Matt Martin, Maria Haddon, and others. The movement for public power in other major cities like New York was also starting to snowball rapidly, and in July of 2019, there was a 24-hour period when a resolution was introduced by city council members in Chicago, demanding a feasibility study on municipalization of ComEd, as well as a press conference from Bill de Blasio and other New York City electeds, saying that municipalization and public power might be an effective response in order to mitigate ongoing harm being done by ConEd in New York. Fast forward to today, when we have a mayoral candidate flagging in the polls, flailing for solid political ground to stand on, who has not only ceded the red lines that she put forward in back rooms with corrupt ComEd leadership, but also has put forward a draft franchise agreement that spits in the face of demands put forward by the democratized ComEd campaign and our aldermanic champions. A ban on municipalization is worse than the current language and precludes all ability for democratic control, true community engagement, and accountability to ongoing and evolving decarbonization goals set by those most impacted by the harmful effects of the climate crisis. A 15-year franchise agreement rather than a five- or 10-year agreement is something that is out of step with the basic reality of climate science and the ways in which we will need to constantly adapt and re-adapt to the material conditions of what basic influence goods and services to keep the lights on and the heat running do to add to the parts per million of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. I'm speaking directly on behalf of the thousands of members of the Chicago Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America, the largest socialist organization in the country, to inform you that these are red lines, that we will outorganize Lori Lightfoot and anyone who takes her side, and that we will see a bright, prosperous, just future with democratic public ownership of not only our electric utility, but every single part of our society. If you see this or you read this, I hope that you will join us in the fight to elect and reelect our 11 endorsed socialist candidates and build the movement for democratic socialism for decades to come.
Thank you, Mr. Estelle, for your comments. Our next speaker is Mr. George Blake Moore.
And something is wrong with you. That was over three minutes. I don't care what he said, like that in Memphis, saying there was another man there, a white man. I don't care what he read. He got over three minutes. Oh, yes, he did. I don't care what that says. Anyway, get on your topic, Mr. Blake Moore. What are you going to speak about? This is Black History Month. And what did you hear yesterday when you were here at the finance? That a white-owned theater, a blue theater in Mr. Kaplan War, one of these white alt ones, war was being financed by planning and development and getting city money? What about the regal? And what else egregious did you listen to? I heard that they're not going by the NBs and WDs, but I advocate for a settlement for 30% of the contracts. No, they didn't. They asked for what? A wave? See how those minutes are running quick with me? Something is wrong with this part up here. It's fixed. The fix is in. I want my black alt ladies and men do not vote for this when it come up for this theater, the blue theater in Kaplan, and the white man, blue is a black art form. And ask your fellow alter lady, Michelle Harris, why would she give money to Anthony Beal for the, uh, 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 in his war? Uh-huh. Why? When we have to empower our history. Now, I want you all to know that they have adopted a landmark, and that is a landmark out there on 79th and Stony Alley. But that's what motivated me to come. You know, you're black, even with a museum, it matters. I told you, it was another, I'm looking from two eyes. It was another camera and saw a white hand. Perhaps he told them to beat this black man and kill him. Black lives matter. White lives now. Hispanic lives now. Asian lives now. But black lives first must matter to black people. And when that item come up, show your real blackness, not by your costume, but how you vote on that issue. I've explained it to you, but there's nothing.
Mr. Blake Moore, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Vladys Domarenzka.
Please press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Mayor Lightfoot and city council members. Nowhere in the world are churches getting blessed and destroyed except here in Chicago. St. Adalbert is very important to us for many reasons, historically, culturally, architecturally, and spiritually. It stands proudly as an example of what my Polish people are capable of and the hard work of our poor immigrant ancestors who came here when Poland was at war. Why are you allowing Cardinal Supich to just erase it while all of us pray that he leaves Chicago or retires? You continue to have a close relationship with the cardinal who is abandoning our neighborhoods. At one time, the archadiocese of Chicago was the largest provider of social services. It's no longer, it is yet today, it's worth $1 billion. Maybe it's time for us to have the archadiocese of Chicago pay property taxes, since their closed churches are no longer benefiting the community. The minute they shut their doors, they should pay property taxes. Maybe this will make them think twice about closing churches just to make money. We have been fighting for St. Adalbert for over seven years. It has been listed by Preservation Chicago as one of its seven most endangered buildings several times. We counted on Alderman Byron St. Cholopez, but he hasn't been able to get it landmarked or downzoned, and it appeared that Alderman Byron St. Cholopez has had a different vision for the St. Adalbert all along. So we are asking you, Mayor Lightfoot, our elected leader, to help us, please. We do not want our church to be gone to us forever. We do not want our church to be turned into an event space for perverted users like Mr. Daniel Davidson does with this temple house in Miami. Please spare prison and the Catholic community from this fate. Please, Arch-Cardinal Supich, to pull out of this deal. We ask all city council members to please use your influence to do the right thing here for both the Polish and Mexican communities who have come to cherish St. Adalbert and see a long future for its Catholic site that contributes to the community positively. Mayor Lightfoot, we are begging you to landmark St. Adalbert immediately. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Dahlia Rebeki.
I am a lifelong resident in Kelson over 30 years. St. Adalbert is my backyard neighbor. In case the news hasn't reached City Hall yet, Cardinal Kupic is on the verge of closing a deal to sell our beloved St. Adalbert Church to Dan Davidson, owner of the Temple House in Miami Beach. In 2003, Davidson purchased an Orthodox Jewish synagogue and converted it to a high-tech, private venue for high-value individuals. While preserving its sacred identity by marketing it as a temple house in 2019, he hosted a simulated event that we do not want in our community, which has families with children living across the street and exclusive and schooling back. And by failing to act to protect St. Adalbert, by default, you are allowing Dan Davidson to bring this filth in our community. We live in a respectful community, and we want to keep it that way. Please, I urge you, Mayor Lightfoot, to write above this and allow your administration to landmark St. Adalbert immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebeki, for your comments. Our next speaker is Ravi Pathare.
Good morning, city council. My name is Ravi Pathare, and I'm a member of the Chicago Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. I wish to speak today regarding the proposed franchise agreement between ComEd and the city of Chicago. To start, I'll say that there seem to be a couple of good things in this proposed agreement. For example, the establishment of a community advisory board, which would be a good first step in providing some oversight for all the corruption problems ComEd seems to have. If anyone else is interested in all the corruption problems ComEd has, the bribery trial is scheduled to begin on March 6th, in case you need to pick up some popcorn for that. Durability of the agreement appears to be pretty bad, in my opinion. ComEd has proposed a $100 million grant to the city in the new agreement, and ComEd plans to quickly recover this value of the grant by increasing electricity rates across the city by 18%. ComEd continues electricity shut-offs, which flies in the face of Mayor Lightfoot's promise to end shut-offs as part of the utility billing relief program, and the proposed 15-year franchise agreement term with abandoned municipalization the first five years is worse than the current franchise agreement, a slap in the face to public power efforts, and a bad deal for Chicago. As Chicagoans, we know the consequences of signing long-term infrastructure deals with private companies. The municipalization ban in particular is telling, because it shows that ComEd knows the municipalization is a popular position and is afraid that alders would be in favor of municipalization were to come to a vote. And speaking of alders, it's my understanding that they were mostly left in the dark during the negotiations between ComEd and Mayor Lightfoot, even though the franchise agreement has been the subject of multiple hearings and discussions within city council over the past three years. If Chicago is to make a big decision like this, the input of alders and the communities that they represent is essential, and deals made in smoke-filled rooms are unacceptable. To close out, I will say the following. I believe that this proposed agreement is simply an attempt by Mayor Lightfoot to get a last-minute point on the board before the mayoral election in 28 days. For the mayor to attempt to ram through this bad agreement this close to an election without the input of alders and the community is political negligence, especially considering that Mayor Lightfoot might not even be mayor four months from now. I want to reiterate that this is a bad deal for Chicago and that we can do better. Because of that, I urge alders to support a shorter, more democratic franchise agreement that is developed with alder and community support, and to vote no on the proposed franchise agreement, should it come to a vote today or any future city council meeting in its present state. Thank you. I use the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Pathare, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, are resolutions, and we have three today. Memorial resolution for Shirley Newsom, a former alderperson, a resolution congratulating Greg Harris on his retirement from the Illinois General Assembly, and a resolution honoring Black History Month, and we will take them in that order. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The first resolution honors former alderwoman Shirley Newsom, who recently passed away. In the box representing the Newsom family are her granddaughter Nikita Dent Murray, Rhonda McFarlane, Jaclyn Calery, and Jeffrey, and Craig Jeffrey. Thank you all for being here. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The chair recognizes Alderwoman King.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I proudly stand in support of this resolution. Alderwoman Shirley Newsom was one of our own. She served in this body willingly after alderwoman and Chair of the Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle stepped down. She stepped up to help the Fourth Ward and did it with only the style and grace that Alderwoman Newsom could. She also said very quickly after that she understood how much we do as public servants, as alderpeople, and said that that's a job that she would never seek again, that how hard it is. But she, you know, I said at her services that, you know, we often talk about angels looking down on us, but she was truly an angel here on earth and a true public servant, because she never retired. She continued to work effortlessly on behalf of her community, which extended beyond North Kenwood, Oakland, but that was truly her heart, North Kenwood, Oakland. Anything that happened in that community, good, had her handprint on it. But I would go further to say that anything that happened in the war and in the city of Chicago that had anything good on it had her handprint on it. And I can stand up here and say that she helped move not only the Fourth Ward forward, but with her hands and tentacles throughout the city, on the CDC, on the Southeast Chicago Commission, on Quad Communities, QCDC, all of the things that she had her hand in, and she had them in everything. I'd also tease her about retirement. I was like, if this is how retirement looks, I don't know if I want to retire, because she was just so involved, but she was passionate about this city and about making sure that there was equity in the city and making sure that, you know, the plan for transformation was carried out and that affordable housing was a part of the city and the community. So, you know, I can stand up here and say that Alderwoman Newsom was a true public servant, loved her city like you should, when people are looking and when nobody is looking, really working hard to move our city forward, and I am just humbled and honored that I was able to know her as a friend, as a colleague, but also, you know, just as a public servant, and just thank you for allowing her to spend all the time that she spent on behalf of our city and especially on behalf of our ward. So thank you for letting us borrow her for some time, and I know, I know she's now an angel looking down on us, still has her hand in everything. So thank you for being here. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Alderwoman King. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to be associated proudly with this resolution. I knew Shirley for over 25 years, first as a staffer when I worked in the Department of Planning and Development, and she was leading the North Kenwood Oakland Community Conservation Council. Sometimes when I attended those meetings, you knew Shirley was in charge, because the meetings started on time, she was organized, and she didn't take no stuff. She was a bad, she was, she was a bad woman, as they say, a bad chick. As I moved into Bronzeville to do community organizing, I knew that the person that I wanted to speak to to get some understanding of my role as a new community organizer in Bronzeville was Shirley, and I spent time with her talking about housing displacement, how to preserve affordable housing, how to use landmark designation to basically help brand a community, to help bring resources into that community. Shirley was generous with her time with me. Sometimes we didn't always agree, but she was never disagreeable. She always took the time to encourage me about what I was doing and the role that I had taken on. In 2011, when she was appointed by the mayor to become the Fourth Ward Alderman when former Alderman Tony Preckwinkle left, she and I would sit here, and she talked to me a lot about blurring the lines between the Third Ward and the Fourth Ward and how that had not happened before, and she wanted to work on that, and actually encouraged me, Rhonda, to work with QCDC, to have them look at our commercial quarters, which I did follow in working with you. Thank you so much, Craig. Thank you as well. And when she moved to the CDC, I always felt comfortable coming before the CDC, because I knew that when Shirley asked questions about something going on in my ward, she knew exactly what she was asking about. She knew every nook and cranny of the Third Ward, the Fourth Ward, and she was not afraid to ask those questions to hold me accountable, but also to give me an opportunity to show my community that I knew what I was doing. So I did appreciate her service on the Community Development Commission. I think that North Kenwood, Oakland is where it is today because of her active and longstanding activism in that community, that she loved North Kenwood, Oakland, she knew everything about North Kenwood, Oakland, and she had a genuine commitment to do the work. Now, she would send you an email about stuff that wasn't looking quite the way she thought, and you could engage with her on that, or she'd pick up the phone and give you a phone call, and we would have a discussion, and I will greatly miss that. Her passing was untimely and so unexpected, and I want to thank her family for sharing her with us. Rhonda, I want to thank you for leading QCDC, which was one of her pet projects, and I'm glad that we're celebrating her life today in city council. Thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dow. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise too to be associated with this resolution. Unlike many in this room, I met her the first time when she came and sat in this chamber with me, and I can call her Grace personified, what an elegant, beautiful black woman she was. And when she came in here, she kind of demanded the space. When she came in here, she lit the room up with her elegance, and so I could always appreciate her honest dialogue with me and telling me, hey, Michelle, I don't think you're on the right side of the issue, and she was unapologetic about it. And so I am grateful that God allowed her to be with us for that short period, and she decided to give up her life to come down here and fill a position for a very short period of time and leave a remarkable legacy down here for those of us that remember working with her that will never forget. So I thank the family again, because once you do this, you all in. It's no just your feet in, you all in, you wet from your head to your toes. So thank you for allowing her to come down here, do a great job, and leave a legacy behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the city council, I too rise in support of this resolution as part of the Three Musketeers on the South Lakefront. I'm representing the Fifth Ward. I've known Shirley for more than 25 years. I was a student of Shirley, not voluntarily, but because I often found myself in circumstances where she was teaching and I was learning, and I am so grateful for that opportunity, because what she started in the neighborhoods north of me, I was able to learn and bring that into the communities of South Shore and Greater Grand Crossing and Woodlong. So I am really grateful for her teaching me and allowing me. I mean, I don't know what other Alderman goes to another Alderman's ward, their meetings in their ward to sit and learn, but that's what I did, and I'm very grateful for that. You know, Shirley and I, we shared a little secret, and I can reveal it now. There was a certain politician that was known for being a certain way, and we wanted to try to update that, that image. And as you know, Shirley was always meticulously dressed and well put together. So Shirley and I would talk on the phone, and we would figure out, okay, well, you work on the shoes, or you work on the color, or you work on the outfit, and we actually got makeup, and... No, you don't know. You think you know. But anyway, that was our little secret, and so I enjoyed doing that with her, because we'd often have to play tag team in order to get that done. It has been an honor and a privilege to know Shirley, to work with Shirley, and rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Hairston. The chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much. I also like to rise in support of this resolution and give my condolences to the family. Shirley Newsom was just a great lady. You know, I knew her from a distance before she came to the city council because of our advocacy for affordable housing. She really believed in having decent and fair housing in the community for her people. She believed that you could bring the community up but not leave anyone behind. I consider Shirley to be a rat or die person. What she believed in, she believed in, and she didn't care what no one thought about it, right? And of course, as the lady said, she was always sharp. She made gray hair look so beautiful. She made gray hair look so beautiful because she always had her hairstyle nicely. And when she was on the CDC, we would have projects to come before the CDC. It was always great to have a voice of understanding and concern and passion, compassion for the people in the city of Chicago to speak up about the affordable housing projects that were happening in the city of Chicago. And when, when Shirley spoke, everyone on the CDC listened and they immediately just voted along with the project because they knew it was all about love with her, passion, and her concern about not only her community, but the people in the city of Chicago. It has been an honor for me to serve with her in the City Council. She brought that same energy and that same love and compassion to the City Council. She's going to be truly missed. She leave behind a great legacy in that community. She have really built up that neighborhood. And I must tell you that every mayor that I've worked with, they all look to Shirley for advice in reference to community development in the city of Chicago. So, my condolences are with you. Thank you for sharing her with us. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
I too rise in support of this resolution. I just had the opportunity to meet her granddaughter in the back, and I was just telling her how much her grandmother meant to me. You know, leaving the West Side and coming to work on the South Side was a different world for me because, you know, the legacy of service in the 24th Ward, my entire family, we've never worked on the South Side before. So, that was a little different for me. And Ms. Newsom embraced me as if I was her own daughter. And when she got sick, she called me and said, listen, I need to talk to you before I can't talk anymore. I just want to offer some words of encouragement. But she was actually the first person I called when I was appointed to this position because I knew how much she fought in the third and fourth ward for affordable housing, for new park district facilities, just everything was, she wanted to uplift, rebuild, and revitalize her communities. And she worked so hard. And when she met me, the first thing she said is, you're going to be on this project, only you, you're the only person that can do this. And when she spoke, she moved like mountains. She moved mountains. And everything she did was so eloquently, she had so much respect on, in the third and fourth wards, everybody looked to Shirley for their knowledge. Rhonda, you were her right hand, and I appreciate everything that you have done for me over the last eight years, working in, at Ellis Park. That was, it was truly a different kind of community, a recreation center. It was more, it was so, she had, she was like, she didn't want anything, this is not a regular park district, you're going to run this, like it was a corporation. And that is exactly what I did. And I wanted to say thank you. Your grandmother was well-loved, and she will be truly missed.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution and offer condolences to, to former Alderman Newsom. Actually, Alderman Newsom and I got sworn in together in January of 2011. Two words that come to mind when I think about her, one was class, the other was power. And she exuded both of those well. In our conversation, I, I had not met Ms. Newsom, Alderman Newsom, prior to joining the council and come to find out that she was actually a West Sider, which of course, all good things come from the West Side. And the fact that, what, okay, don't hate the game, don't hate the game, don't hate the game. Nah, I am, but it's gonna be all right. But again, she comes and to find out that, that Pastor Murray and the, and the legacy that they've done on the West Side, it would be fitting for the work. And I understood her commitment to the community, just as the New Galilee family being part of the 28th Ward has been for a number of years. So, we just want to thank you for, for loaning her to us and the wisdom and the things that she shared with a lot of us here in this council will definitely be remembered. We want to thank you for your service because when we serve in these positions, we know it takes a toll on the family and that sometimes you're not there for certain things. So, we just want to thank you for your time, perseverance, and, and what you all have meant to us as members of this caucus, and also as for the city of Chicago and the greater good for our community. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. When I learned of the passing of my sister, I'm like, oh my God, here we go again. And that just let me know how short our days are. You don't know. Shirley was a giant in her own way. When she came into the council, she was a quiet giant, should I tell you? Her spirit was bigger than her word, just her spirit alone. And my colleagues have already mentioned that from her sitting on the CDC, I noticed she would ask those tough questions, no matter whose ward it was in. And it, and when she asked the questions, it wasn't that she was against or for, she just wanted to make sure that the people were getting the best, that she had been gotten out of that project. And I really appreciated her for it because large shoes, bigger than life, but she'll be missed. And it's something that we have to deal with. So, on behalf of the residents in the 37th Ward and myself, I, I am still saddened to know that I won't see her around again, but I will say, see you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mitz. Any other members of the body wish to speak to this resolution? I stand with this entire body in support of this resolution. I'm going to share a few of your grandmothers' and friends' accomplishments because I think this is important for the public to hear and for it to be read into this body's record. On December 25th, 2022, our city lost a true leader and faithful public servant in the form of Shirley Newsom. Shirley held many titles, as you've heard, from alderman to co-chair, board president to stenographer, and caretaker to legal secretary. And it's clear that through all of her many roles, she was a committed public servant, public servant through and through. She began serving in Chicago at a young age. In the late 1970s, she founded a local block club, which led to the development and revitalization of her beloved Kenwood Oakland community. She was integral to the city's designation of North Kenwood Oakland as a conservation area. And through her dedication, she went on to serve as chairman of the city's North Kenwood Oakland Community Conservation Council. Alderwoman Newsom also joined the Southeast Chicago Commission, where she later served as a board president, leading efforts to promote housing, transportation, business development, and other neighborhood enhancements. Being well-known for her commitment to serve, as you heard, in 2011, she answered a call to serve her community as a fourth ward alderman. She continues serving our residents in her community really throughout her life, serving on the Obama Presidential Library Community Advisory Council, the Ida B. Wells Commemorative Art Committee, and several Chicago Housing Authority working groups, and Chicago Park District Advisory Councils, as you also heard. Her passion and love of service clearly knew no bounds. Her legacy lives on in the continued revitalization of her community and the South Side, and it lives on in the countless community leaders she mentored and worked alongside of several whom you heard from today. The fourth ward community in our entire city was lucky to know and, and benefit from the great work and sacrifice of Shirley Newsom. I also want to say, I had heard of her, of course, for a very long time, but I got to see her in action. Rhonda, you remember, when we first opened up 44 Grove, the development that not only couples housing, affordability, and retail, all owned by African-Americans, and revitalizing that strip of Bronzeville. I thought of her as like a proud grandmother who had made the sacrifice of raising her children and then saw those children go off to do good work. And then the babies were coming. She was regal, as many said. And her presence, always a little bit to the side, never front and center, but very present in the work because this is something she was proud of. She was proud of the people that had worked alongside her and then were carrying the baton and the torch forward even further. That's my memory of Shirley J. Newsom. And I would be remiss if I didn't also say, thank you, QCDC. What you are doing, the work, how you're supporting small businesses, and really making sure that you are a presence for good in the economic development and revitalization of Bronzeville, you will get your due in this chamber someday soon. But thank you so much. And on behalf of the City Council and our colleagues far and wide, I extend my sympathies to you, her family, and her friends. But as you heard, her legacy endures for a lifetime. So, thank you very much, and thank you for sharing her. You have our deepest gratitude and condolences on a life well served. Ladies and gentlemen, Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move adoption of the resolution by rising vote.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, our next resolution is in honor of the retirement and service of former State Representative and Majority Leader Greg Harris. And joining Representative Harris and a boxer, Karen Fitzgerald, Kathy Henning, John Paul Valdez, Ramon Gardenhire, Sean Tenner, Chris Jessup, State Representative Lamont Robinson, and Brian Johnson of Equality Illinois. Are there any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise to support this resolution to basically congratulate Greg on a job well done. When I first got down here into the City Council, you were one of the people that I saw all the time, just constantly running around, getting things done. And you always remember those people who get things done. And the footprint that you left here in the City Council was second to none. And so, I appreciate everything that you did for the people of this city. But then you took your leadership skills and got smart, left this body, and went to Springfield. And when I tell you, you hit the ground running in Springfield, and you immediately moved and maneuvered your way into leadership roles, and people started looking to you for guidance, for, for just input, and to take key legislation and move it to the next level. And so, that's a great testament to your leadership ability, your commitment, and your dedication to public service. So, I just want to thank you for everything that you've done, man. Congratulations and much success on your next endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beal. And the Chair recognizes Alderman Capelman.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this resolution. At one point in time, we had four members of the LGBT community representing one area that was you, State Senator Mike Simmons, our mayor Lightfoot, and myself. I would have to check with our resident historian, Alderman Burke, but that might be the first time in the country's history that there was such a large representation from the LGBT community. We cannot take this lightly. This was unheard of 15 years ago. The fact that we've come this, this far is due to the hard work of you and many others who made such great sacrifices. You have left an indelible mark on the state of Illinois in so many different areas. But the, the mark that you, that you left that I am most thankful is the work that you did to pass marriage equality. It was a hard fight. I don't need to tell you that. And there was a lot of work that you had to do behind the scenes, and there were times when you took incredible grief, but you stayed on the course. And my husband and I are very thankful. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Capelman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to be associated with this resolution as well. I can remember Representative Harris during appropriations down when I was at CDB, always asking great questions and really a champion for Chicago as the lead budgeteer in the General Assembly in the House. We're going to miss your leadership down in Springfield, especially your advocacy for the city of Chicago. We take a look at the leadership that's currently in place now in Springfield, gives us pause because we have Speaker Chris Welch, great guy, not from Chicago, President Harmon, not from Chicago, and some of the leadership. And so, we're going to definitely miss your advocacy in Springfield. And as, and as the lead budgeteer, I really appreciate the fact that you were able to negotiate and get things done. Here in City Council, unfortunately, we don't have that structure where we have a lead budgeteer in order to negotiate with the executive branch, but hopefully that will change. But I do appreciate everything that you did for the state of Illinois, everything for the city of Chicago while you were as in the member, the member in the General Assembly. So, again, thank you and congratulations, Greg.
Thank you, Alderman Viegas. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ostrom.
Thank you, Madam President. Very proud to be here today to honor Greg. To my colleagues who will be retiring after May, look at how relaxed and happy Greg looks. Greg is truly a great person and a great public servant. Politics found Greg. If you were to ask Greg 20 years ago and say, Greg, you're going to be the Majority Leader of the Illinois House of Representatives, you're going to pass marriage equality that would set the tone across the country and do lots of great things, he would have laughed. But Greg is a great example of someone who works hard and works with people, sits and listens to people through difficult situations, and is a grunt and puts the work in to solve problems, no matter what that is. He has done that throughout his life. He's a survivor. He's had a long life and challenges, and he has survived, and he's persevered. And he's done that with humility, he's done that with laughter and sense of humor, and great, great integrity. I'll say that again, great integrity. He leaves as a Majority Leader with people on both sides of the aisle in Springfield, downstate, upstate, gay, straight, every religion, all of them acknowledge what a wonderful person he is, what a hard worker he is. That's very rare in politics, but is a true testament to what he did and what he is as a person, first and foremost. My colleague Alderman Capelman talked about the Marriage Equality Act. When I was in Springfield, there was a moment where you could discriminate against members of the LGBTQ community in housing and employment, that was legal under the law in Illinois. And that changed. And when Greg took over after Larry McKeon had left, he pushed for marriage equality, which has been an unbelievable thing for people in this state, that, that people can't imagine, you know, the people that have been impacted by that, families, people that love each other, their marriage, their love is able to be recognized. And Greg made that happen. When you pass a big bill in Springfield and the governor does a bill signing, lots of celebration. When, when the Marriage Equality Act passed, lots of champagne, lots of parties, lots of people getting pens for the hard work. But Alderman Capelman brought up a point that's really important. This was not a straight... This was not a straight line to get it done. There were people across the country, conservatives, people in this state, that were doing everything possible, legally, politically, everything possible to stop this. But it was the right thing to do. There were people that were challenging how this was moving forward. And the wait as the lead sponsor to get that done, that's something that really takes a toll. But Greg, because he knew the importance, he knew what it meant to people. He took all that energy as a force of good, and he got it done. And today, people that don't even realize the impact of what that means are benefiting from it. And that set the tone, and it was a domino across the country, where across the country, people can benefit. That happened because of Greg. In Uptown, though, they've known him for a lot of things. If you go down Argyle Street, Asian business owners, nonprofit owners, people that deal with mental health, homelessness, they know him from the work he does on the budget and solving problems. He was, during the rounder years, the Democrats' chief negotiation on the budget. That's a fun job in the rounder years, right? But Greg was there fighting tooth and nail for money for Chicago schools, for money for mental health providers, everything that you can think of social services during that really challenging time. Greg was in there, working and benefiting. And he succeeded in that. And then when we got a new governor, they grew the budget that impacts people across the state of Illinois. He cut his teeth as the Chief of Staff for Mary Ann Smith. Anyone who's got a staff person who wants to get into politics should look at Greg's history. He didn't come to politics, you know, with a name or with a lot of money or with a full head of hair. He did it with his hard work and his compassion for people to solve problems. He's had an amazing career. As good as he is as an elected official, he's better as a person. So, on behalf of all of us, Greg, all the best in the future. We're happy to have the 48th Word call you home, even though you live across the border. We didn't read District D N. But we all appreciate everything you've done. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Osterman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Greg, you have been a hero to so many people for so many reasons. I haven't had a chance to get to know you very well, but I feel like we've been friends forever. So, thank you for all your work on behalf of the people of the city of Chicago. Good luck on your next endeavors. You're leaving big shoes to fill, my friend. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Representative Harris, of course, I always remember you as being the Chief of Staff and how hard a worker you were, working for the Alderman, and how unassuming you were at that time. But also, how you were one of the nicest guys in City Hall. And it was, you know, even when you went to Springfield, you became very unassuming. But people just didn't know that you had a lot of fire in you, and you were able to make a lot of things happen. When you were working here in City Hall, and we would have committee meetings, you would know every detail of every issue that we were working on. You really helped the Alderman to look good. But quite as it's kept, you helped a lot of us also. It was an honor to work with you when you were in City Hall. And I think we did this before. Didn't we do this when you were at City Hall? And, uh, no, we didn't. Okay, so this is our first time, first time being able to do this. But I appreciate all of the things that, the kind words and the help that you would give me with mentioning some of the things that was going on and helping me to understand what was happening. You know, it's only fitting that you become a leader in Springfield because you were trained in City Council, man. You know, why wouldn't you become a leader in Springfield? I know the Springfield guys don't like that, but... But you did a great job here. You did a great job in Springfield. I was always proud when I heard your name on the television. You know, you do things without a lot of fanfare. You just get it done. And you have done a lot of things that has benefited the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois. And I'm so proud to say that I know you. And I know you're going to do well in your retirement, whatever you choose to do, because you always leave a mark on people liking you. You know, a lot of elected officials ruled by a lot of other different things, by fear, by leverage, by all of those things. You're just a common guy. You rule by just being a regular, nice guy, and that's going to carry you a long way with the rest of your career. So, congratulations to you, and I wish you well.
Burnett, the Chair recognizes Alderman Vaskis.
Thank you very much, Madam President. There's not a lot that I can add as far as the history. I think we've heard it from a lot of our colleagues. What I wanted to share and thank you so much for was really your mentorship and leadership. You know, when I first came to council, I was somebody, a city kid, didn't have a lot of government experience, and had to figure out how to lead an award and how to lead us through times where we're, you know, it feels like we're always divided. And I think you've shown in exemplary manner how to really listen to people and bring people together, regardless of whether they agree with each other. And I just remember our, you know, somewhat frequent and hopefully more frequent breakfasts at Pauline's, being able to talk about what the experience is like to be in leadership. And I am much better at anything I do in this role because of what I've learned from you and how you've led with your heart first and with wisdom and the ability to hear people out. I can't imagine what it's like trying to figure out budgets at the state level, especially after watching what it's like here at the city level. And I want to commend you for that level of work and the temperament to have to navigate through that to find common solutions. And so, I can't thank you enough. I will always thank you for that mentorship and leadership. And although everyone's talking about the things you have done, I look forward to everything you're going to do. Because your leadership hasn't left, it will continue in whatever role you're in. So, thank you very much for your service and for being the example of what it means to be a statesperson whenever the term is used. Thank you very much, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Vaskis. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Madam President. Leader Harris, I know this morning, the first Facebook post I saw was from you. And I believe it was Baked Alaska Day. Oh, there was some other really interesting things. But here in City Council, I know this isn't officially Greg Harris Day, but I think it should be. And it's an honor to have had a short time working with you. Harry said it best. Everyone's had wonderful things. I just appreciate, both with our prior resolution and with you, it's wonderful to have people that we can see as role models. So, as people at the beginning of our elected public service career, looking at the things that you've accomplished in the legislative body and knowing that we have so many challenges that we face all the time. You've done amazing work. You set an example for all of us. I think of you as a role model, and I appreciate your service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Haddon. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I just rise to join the chorus. Essentially, my good friend before me just said it very well. I recall Greg meeting you when I was Executive Director of a nonprofit and visiting you in Springfield to lobby you on issues. And it was never lobbying. It was more of a conversation. It was more of a collaboration. You know, you listening, you giving your advice and your thoughts. I remember leaving our meetings thinking, "Wow, what an example of a great public official." Someone who listens, someone who leads, someone who's about results, someone who uses power for the benefit of their community and the benefit of our society, not just their own benefit. You are a true example, my friend. I'm glad to call you a friend. I love seeing your morning Facebook posts about what day it is. Those are great. But I just appreciate your spirit, who you've been, and the type of leader you've been. I'm just sad we're losing you from the legislature, but glad we still have you as an ally here in our great city. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for your mentorship. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. And I'm so glad that we get to honor you for just a little bit of time in this chamber today. Later on this year, I will be marrying my partner, my fiance, Brian, of 10 years. And that opportunity here in the state of Illinois is enshrined into law because of you, because of the work that you did. And I remember as a young gay kid growing up, being able to look to individuals like you and Alderman Tunny and others and say that the way that I was born, the person that I love, that that does not preclude my ability to serve Mike's city and that people of the LGBTQ community are running and being elected to office. So, I just want to say thank you for your many years of service. Thank you for being a trailblazer. Thank you for making sure that our state is more fair and is a better place for everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Ramirez-Rosa. Next is Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the City Council, I too rise in support of this resolution. Welcome to the club. We're going to all have to get together and have breakfast, all of us people that are retiring. I'm paying. Thank you so much. But Greg, I want to take you back a little bit. And when I think about you and I think of all of the assistance and the guidance that you gave me back in those years with Alderman Mary Ann Smith, what comes to mind is "Wanky" and the "Save Wanky" issue that was before City Council. And with the thousands and thousands of letters that you got and the comments, you handled that so gracefully. And you took that gracefulness to Springfield because Springfield is not an easy place to deal with. And your grace, your knowledge, and your work ethic has carried you well. And I am so proud of all the work that you have done. I thank you for all of your support over the years, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Harrison. The Chair recognizes Alderman Espada.
Thank you so much. I'm proud to rise to stand in support of this resolution. My, I'm not up on the North Side with some of my colleagues, but I remember when I was an organizer with Jane Addams Senior Caucus. This was for me about 14 years ago now. But I do remember a meeting with you, which was the first meeting I ever coordinated as an organizer when I was 28, to support seniors who were trying to see the affordability of their homes extended. Federal contract, very anxious for me, very scary, like picking up the phone to talk to state reps. I knew what that felt like in my neighborhood, in Logan Square. Not always a positive experience 14 years ago. A lot of people sent staff you sent yourself. And I remember for someone who was very anxious in that space for leaders who were very anxious, you were a calming presence, you were a listening presence. You made hard, specific commitments, and you followed up on those commitments. And that might sound like a low bar too clear, but for me, that was impressive. That showed me what professionalism and what I would hope to see from elected officials looked like. It was encouraging. It was the first time, I don't know if I'd ever been that encouraged by how an elected official comported themselves for me at that age. So, I really thank you now and still for the impact you had on me, for the impact you had on the seniors I was working with, and certainly the impact you've had over your career. Thank you.
Espada, the Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I rise also in support of this resolution. I think there's been a lot of discussion about the many things you've accomplished later. But I think we could and should emphasize how you went about doing it. I think about how generous you've been, not just since I got into office, but when I first ran. Sometimes, there were elected officials who weren't really interested in meeting right away, especially when you're a nobody who nobody sent. But you quickly said, "Let's sit down." Within a week, we did. You were generous with your time, generous with your guidance, as everybody mentioned. You also are and continue to be honest and direct. You didn't mince your words in terms of being patient, but just getting right to the point. You didn't waste your time because that was so valuable. You didn't waste ours. And it kind of leads me to my last point, which is, I don't know if this is the exact right word, but just how devoted you are to our community, both your district, the city, the state. I don't know how you've done it. You seem to know more than most anybody I know about any issue, even stuff that I bring to you that are city issues. You know so much more about it. But the ways in which you care about your community and how you've given so much of your time, so much of your intellect, I think continues to be hard to be put into words. And when I think about all the people who've stood up today, and so many of them are your first termers on City Council, it's so clear, as well as Karen, your staffer, and so many others at the state, your ripple effects will continue for decades. Throughout, of course, the state, but throughout here in the city. I think we will be spending the rest of our careers trying to emulate you in any way we can. Because I really, even though I've only known you for about four years, can't think of a negative thing to say about you. And if I can end my career with anyone saying anything along those lines, I would be fortunate. But with you, you're just a one of one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Martin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Greg, I just want to extend my congratulations as well on behalf of my family. We were proud to see the effort that you had undertaken with the Civil Union Act, with the Marriage Fairness Act, to provide our families with the ability to have families in a way that wasn't contemplated just a few years ago. When I look back at what happened in places where you went to, where you grew up, Colorado, trying to pass laws, I think in the early '90s to prohibit the LGBT community from even being part of the process, and looking to today, continuing that fight in places throughout the United States. I was glad to see all the effort that you and those with you today undertook to make sure that people in Illinois could have all those rights as they should be. I hope that even in retirement, I am sure you will continue to be a leader on these issues and continue to mentor people, continue to fight for the rights of the LGBT community-plus community to make sure that we don't go backwards and that this country moves in the right direction. So, thank you for all your service from day one. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Wagasback. Any other members of the body who wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderman Tunny.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I stand to support resolution. A lot has been said, and a lot I cannot say because Greg and I have been so close and personal. I know more dirt that he and I have shared that we cannot share. Okay, so, that is 35 years, I think, of friendship. And I'll just end with the saying that, in life, you're lucky to have five people that you can trust as your friend. Greg is one of those for me. Thank you. Good luck in retirement. We'll continue to work. As Leslie said, there's a breakfast that I might pick up the tab for retirees somewhere on the North Side. Thank you, Mayor. Good luck, Greg.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution. And unlike a lot of folks in this room, I know Greg from Springfield, actually, first, and then got to know him better here in Chicago. I think that Harry Osterman said it best and very eloquently to those of us in the chamber here that aren't so familiar with all of your great public service and the incredible work you did in Springfield. I worked down there for a time, and it was always a very partisan atmosphere, even more so these days. But the fact that you could reach across the aisle and get work done with your partisan enemies on a regular basis really speaks volumes. enemies on a regular basis really speaks volumes about your talent and your commitment in this job. So I know that your constituents are going to miss you dearly. I know the city of Chicago will miss you dearly as our advocate in Springfield, but I'm very fortunate to have known you and all the congratulations in the world to you and I hope your, your next big deal is a wonderful one. So congratulations, Greg.
Thank you, Alderman Riley. Last but not least, Alderman Knutson.
You so much, Madam President, and thank you so much for bringing this important resolution forward to honor our friend Greg Harris. Greg, you've got an undeniable legacy of leadership in our state and what's been so important to me is that you've done it so openly and bravely. As a gay man, as an HIV-positive man, I have a lot to learn from your legacy with that and will continue to learn from you in that way. You know, we became fast friends after a really good breakfast, but I knew who you were, and I've told you this, a good amount of time before that breakfast. Back in 2010, I was still at the University of Illinois, from a very conservative hometown, and I was deeply in the closet. I was sneaking to the undergrad library to plug in my computer for internet to watch the hearings that were happening around civil unions. Three years later, you pushed marriage through. Less than a decade ago, we got marriage equality in the state of Illinois, and I think that's really important because that started this tidal wave of additional rights. I also want to thank you just for the way you speak about mental health. I view it very important as leaders that we speak openly about mental health and our mental health thoughts and issues so that we destigmatize it going forward. You've advocated mental health resources in our state and city in an incredible way and is something I think we all really need to continue doing. I'm grateful to serve in this body, to serve with a lot of colleagues that are LGBTQ+ and have pushed a lot of important rights. And, you know, we as council and Mayor Lightfoot continue to push protections for women, underrepresented individuals, the transgender community, and that's something we have to keep doing. You know, in Chicago, compared to other states in our union, we definitely say gay and that's something that is super important. So keep staying gay, keep saying gay. It's important. And I want to thank you. I'm going to use you as a resource, a friend, and but go have some fun. I think that is to all the retirees in our council and in the state legislature. You've all worked really hard, so go have some fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Knutson. I too stand with the entire body of this council in strong support of this resolution. Our city and especially our LGBTQ plus community, myself included, owe you a deep debt of gratitude. Thanks. I'm going to talk a little bit about why, but first I want to talk about the qualities, I think, that you embody. Strong, balanced, pragmatic and productive and truly a real gentleman. Those are the things that come easily to mind when I think about you, when I think about how you move through the world and particularly how you conducted yourself as a public servant. As the first openly gay person in Illinois, to serve as a member of the legislative leadership by becoming the majority leader of the Illinois House of Representatives. Greg, you know this, you have been our champion. Your dedication to this community was best demonstrated when you were the lead sponsor of the Religious Freedom and Marriage Fairness Act, which legalized same-sex marriage in Illinois. I personally will never forget the day that it became effective, June 1st, 2014, because that was the day that my wife and I were finally able to legally bind ourselves together as spouses. So I thank you personally, but I especially thank you on behalf of my daughter. It's made a big difference in our family. We all have to thank Greg Harris for fearlessly and tirelessly demanding equality in this state or our community, the LGBTQ plus community in Illinois. Through 16 years as a representative and 14 years as a chief of staff for the great Alderwoman Mary Ann Smith of the 48th Ward, Greg has been a dedicated public servant, endlessly committed to the people of this great city of Chicago. His focus on not only LGBTQ equality and rights, but mental health, substance abuse uses, homelessness, at-risk youth, comprehensive breast cancer services and accessible hair healthcare. And of course, he was a master of the sometimes Byzantine world of Springfield budgeting, always on behalf of our great city. And through the years, Greg has also supported, as you heard, so many other public servants and particularly those from the LGBTQ plus community, knowing the importance of making sure that the latter extended well behind him so others could follow in his footsteps. And outside of his career, he demoted much of his time to AIDS-related causes in Chicago and was rightfully inducted into the Chicago LGBTQ Plus Hall of Fame in 1996 and was recognized for being the co-founder and president of the AIDS Walk in Chicago. Greg has accomplished so much, I could go on at length. But suffice it to say, it's our honor to recognize you, to make sure that your legacy has real potency and meaning here in this body where you've helped not only members of the City Council, me personally, but also residents of our city who may not know your name, but absolutely are the beneficiaries of your great work. So thank you on your exemplary service and leadership and I join the members of this body in wishing you a happy, healthy and long retirement. We're all anxious to see where you're going to put your great mind and your great talents to work next. So thank you, sir. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move past this resolution in the omnibus.
I should also say, I neglected one person who's in the box because his name was not on my list, and that is Bennett Lawson. Thank you, sir, also for being here. And hearing no objection, so ordered. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have one last resolution and this one is in honor of Black History Month. Any members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? Chairman Irvin, do you want to speak first or do you want to back cleanup? The Chair recognizes.
I'll start. Again, I want to thank members of the council for the recognition of Black History Month. Normally, we meet a little later in the month, but today we're meeting on the first, which I think is apropos as we look at the history of the city of Chicago, we look at the history of this country, and we find that black history is a part of American history. While we're seeing some other things happen in other regions of our country, I'm glad to know that we're in a state that recognizes the history and the contributions that African-Americans have made to the creation and the stabilization of this, of this nation. While started here in Chicago by Carter G. Woodson, and also for those of you who didn't get the email, please join the Carter G. Woodson Warrior List for the Black Caucus Foundation. We want to make sure that we continue to do the work for our community. But again, we are asking everyone support and be part of what we consider to be American history and is vital and pivotal, pivotal point in our time. We're going through situations where we had to get a constitutional amendment in order to vote. We had to get a constitutional amendment in order to be recognized. And so we do not want to walk backwards in this moment as others are, others are poised to reduce the rights of many individuals, especially those of us who have been disenfranchised through the years. We've gone from picking cotton to picking presidents, but nonetheless, we're still in some respects disrespected, even in our home communities. As we see the work and across the, across the country, we want to make sure that the African-American story, the African-American experience and the African-American community stand strong and be part of everything that's happening, not only here from a aspect of government, but economically. We talk about, I spoke at a school this year for King Day, and the one thing that struck me about Dr. King was when he started talking about economics. And when we started talking about economics, the game changed because economically, once a community is thriving and working, it can do everything that it needs to do. So I want to thank the mayor for her vision and seeing about Invest Southwest because it is important that we create a, a overall global city, but we can't have a city where we've got one group here and another group here and another group there. So I just want to thank for the commitment to resources and to continue to work in the black community on the southwest sides of the city. And again, let's continue with the history of America, but black history is a part of the foundation of that, of our history as a country. So thank you all and God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chairman Irvin, to my colleagues and City Council. I always enjoy the opportunity to talk about Black History Month because it give me a chance to reflect back from when that came and where we are today. I thought about this morning as I realized we're celebrating black history. I said, wow, we have history in this council. I do believe it's probably first time for every black in the council to be the first to hold an elected position in your family. And if not, it may only be a few that may have had someone before them. And that's really important because our children need to know the struggle. We've come a long ways. And I have to write down to say that because our children today don't know that struggle. They don't know that peoples gave their life so that they could have a life. Folks have lost their life. I think about 1955 when Emmett Till got killed, year I was born. Ten miles from where I was, I was born, Tupelo, Tupelo, Mississippi, Tipple. And here I am now, 68 years old. I said, well, let me go back there because I was a child when I was born. I want to go and see what this town looked like. And yet today it brought tears to my eyes and I could be thankful to my parents that they got us out of there. And that my parents had to move out, move us out in the middle of the night, sneak you out because she feared for the life of the, you know, other young boys and girls around there. Nothing too much have changed because you can see the difference between where the blacks stay and where whites stay. My little town, we had a grocery store, a church, a cemetery and five houses, Tipple, Mississippi. I'm like, wow. And you go 10 miles out the way and I needed some gas. They won't let you get $50 worth of gas. Thank God I had two credit cards so I could go on the other side of the tank because they, you ain't keeping me down here. I'm up out of here. I mean, that was back in the day, but I'm sharing that because it was, it was bad. It was bad and I stand here today, Alderman Irvin mentioned, coming from $4 a day to my salary, what I make now. And you think that I can't look back and thank the Lord? How did I get here? It's only by the grace of God. Prayer. Prayer. Somebody had been praying for us. And then we got a hold to it and now we praying for ourselves and we have to do that same thing for our children today because they do not understand segregation is here, racism is here, and it's not going anywhere. We just know, need to know how to move and bob, vibing bob to get around it. You got to, you got to make some moves. You got to take care of your family. You got to feed your children. We don't get the same privilege. The color of your skin means something. It's not the same for everyone else. Our parents struggled. I wore clothes to school made out of flower sack dresses, the flower sack. And you take the flower sack and you put it together and make the dresses. These are little Sunday, Sunday, go to church Sunday dresses. Looking back, and now you can go buy what you want to buy, but I appreciated the little things that I had. It ain't about the money. I appreciated those things that they struggled to put on our back to make do. We throw away food. When we grew up, you couldn't throw away nothing in the house. If you did, you better give it to the cat, you better feed it to the chicken, you better give it to somebody, but you don't throw food away just to be throwing it away. You learn how to cook, to make everything. You didn't throw nothing away. You took one thing and made something else with it. Whatever was left over. These are important things our children need to know, our history. And here today, we don't even, school's right around and we're not, our children won't go to school when we had to walk miles. Kids getting up right now in the south, 4 o'clock in the morning just to get to school at 8 o'clock. And they going to school. And our school's right around from us. So education is really important. We have to get it together in our mind and put love, start block by block. Start in your house first, get your family together. Then get your block together. Go get your neighbors together, get the business people together, get a community together and put some love in that community. We don't have to walk around, holding guns, acting like we bad. You ain't got nothing no way. Need some sense. That's what we need. To go out and make, be productive in life. Just use that brain. Everybody have a brain and we should use it to the fullness. Not what I can't do is what I can do. Not what I can't have, what I can have. Not where I can't go and what it won't let me do, what I am going to do. It's always the positive. And that's what I would say to our blacks in the, in this city. Respect your elders, that your days be longer upon this land that God have gave you. We need to learn how to do that. We are walking away and turning our backs on where our eyes. Teach our children to be Christ-like. Let them grow up so they can have some morals, baggage and integrity, self-respect, discipline. That's what we have to do. And thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of the City Council. As black, I can tell you, I'm black and I'm proud and I don't care whether you like it or not, it's all good with me. I know where I came from and I know where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mitz. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman, Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Do I really have to go after Emma Mitz?
You can just say mic drop.
Yes, I, there's, I rise in support of this resolution and I always learn something from Emma Mitz after she speaks, especially at this month and on these resolutions, and I appreciate that every time for the many years that I've served with you. And I'll just say that I appreciate serving with all the great leaders in this body, the people outside of this body in Illinois, as we heard from others like Greg Harris today, but black leaders throughout this state who have led this place to where we are today with many more issues to resolve and to work on. And I hope that, you know, we can continue to recognize people, leaders of the past like Shirley Newsom today, leaders here today, those of you I serve with, and then leaders of the future, I think our youth who are hopefully being mentored in the right way to take leadership reins from us in the future. And just want to stand in recognition of all the efforts that you've undertaken and the things that we've learned as we've worked together in this body. And I thank all of you for everything that you've done and continue to do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Capitol.
Thank you, Madam President. I too stand to support this resolution. And I grew up in Baytown, Texas. It's about 30 miles east of Houston. In 1967, schools were required in that, in our city to be integrated. We had two high schools, Robert E. Lee and George Washington Carver. George Washington Carver students went over to Robert E. Lee. They changed the name of George Washington Carver because it was not appropriate for white people to go to a school named after an African-American. And all the African-American students went to Robert E. And all the African-American students, uh, went to Robert E. Lee and we couldn't change that name because, well, that was history. Uh, Robert E. to this day is the only high school left in the United States of America that's still named after that man. In nineteen sixty-nine, uh, when my, my, when my dad died, uh, our family, we moved to Oregon, nineteen sixty-nine, for one year. And then we came right back to Baytown. Um, and I went right back to Robert E. Lee High School to finish out my senior year. Uh, Oregon, Oregon opened my eyes. I, I saw things differently. It was also a very different time, nineteen sixty-nine, there was a lot of protests going on. Uh, Black Power, we were hearing that, that term. It was new to me. So, when I moved back to Baytown, Texas, I, my eyes opened. I, I saw this Confederate flag on the school grounds and it didn't make any sense. And it didn't make any sense to a lot of the other students there. And so, we organized together to get rid of the Confederate flag. Uh, African-American students, um, Latino students and white students. Um, it just so happened that every single white student who, um, supported this effort had at one time or another lived outside the state of Texas. To join a club, you had to be voted in. Well, white students weren't voting in African-American students to join a club. So, a group of us, we started our own club. We called it the Human Race Club. The whole purpose of it was to force integration. The president was an African, African-American student. I, I was a member of that club, but it wasn't, I didn't choose to be a member of that club because I was some self-righteous man who, uh, kid. I, I joined that club because I was exposed to something different. And that's what changed me. We live in a city right now, seventy-seven communities. And, uh, I, I talk about racism where I grew up. Whoa, it really exists in Chicago. And it has helped me as an alderman to, to work with colleagues who are living in communities that are so different from mine. I remember talking to Alderman Michael Scott when we were talking about neighborhoods. And he mentioned that there were three thousand vacant city lots and he has warned. And I have one. Um, that's, that's not excusable. Um, Mayor, what you did in the Midwest Southwest is transformative. And, and it, this change can't just come from you. It must come from all of us. And, and I am convinced, because institutional racism is a curse on this country. And that curse will continue. And it's going to take a work of all of us together, um, to, to, to address this. And we'll know that we have reached that point when the, there's, when someone lives in poverty, it doesn't, there's not a, an inclination as probably someone who's African-American. When someone is arrested, it's probably not just, we, we're not going to make that assumption. When there's a carjacking, we're not going to make that assumption. We know racism will be eliminated when we're at a point in our life where it doesn't matter what color you are, uh, with, that correlates with how much money you have or your successes. Um, so I employ all of us to keep working together, uh, to eliminate this curse that is pervasive in our country. And we'll do it by, by uniting hands. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Capelman. Thank you for sharing those words. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. I also like to stand in support of this resolution. Uh, you know, uh, as African-Americans, we have gone through a lot of adversities, uh, over the years, uh, coming to this country or being bought to this country. You know, I have a, um, a picture, uh, at my house, uh, that I, uh, actually got from a CPS, uh, arts fair. A, a picture of the opening, uh, for the, uh, opening for the, what was it? The, uh, the door of last return, where over in, uh, Ghana where they bought the ships and, and, and they, they, they bought all the slaves in and they had to go through that door, uh, before they came over to become slaves. But they, and it's the point of no return. And, and, um, you know, I just think about how, you know, a lot of us here in this country, some of the slaves who, who got here through several different ways, whether they were sold or, or whatever the case may be, uh, coming over on those ships and going throughout the world, uh, all over the world to be used for labor and for folks to make money off of. Um, you know, a lot of them coming here went through a big struggle. Um, a lot of them separated from their families. A lot of family members died on those ships. Uh, folks came over in inhumane, uh, conditions. In order to get here, folks were beaten, um, you know, uh, male-nourished, uh, and, and a lot of things. And I, you know, every time during this month, I make sure when I speak to young people, um, at these schools and when they have Black History Month events, always try to let them know, uh, we are the survivors. Uh, those of us here in America, we are the strongest of the strongest. Because unfortunately, um, a lot of us didn't make it. Some didn't make it by choice. A lot of folks did suicide. Some didn't make it because they just, they died from being beaten or they died from being male-nourished. Uh, you know, so a lot of us, we are the strongest of the strongest. And then have to work through segregation and, and, uh, Jim Crow and all of those other things. And to see how, uh, so many of us have prospered and have maintained. And even today, I mean, I'm sixty years old and I'm almost sixty, right? I'll be sixty in, uh, August. But, uh, you know, we've gone through a lot. Um, you know, even in these walls and these buildings, working with different people, we experienced discrimination, uh, especially when you're younger. You know, as you get older, you can see it coming a mile away. Um, and it's still here. But we still have to persevere. But at the same time, you know, I was just at an event the other day and I was there with a lot of successful African-American business people. And I was telling them that, you know, we need to make sure that we let our young people know that we are successful, that they can be successful, and that they know that there are so many successful African-Americans in this city, in this state and in this country. But the thing is, our challenge is, even with our own folks, we tend to run away from each other. We tend to leave folks behind and we don't try to, you know, we, we always like, we got ours and we're not concerned about them having theirs. Uh, and, and we separate each other. Even, you know, when you visit, uh, other countries around the world, you see those separations with darker people all the time in, in even other foreign countries. I, I, uh, think, you know, at this time in these months, this month that we have been given, that we need to make sure we encourage everyone in our community to be the best that we can be because the sky is the limit for us. We've been through hell and back. There's nothing that we can't do. We the strongest of the strongest. And, uh, I'm just happy to say that I am part of that legacy, part of that heritage and, and that gives me strength to, uh, you know, to keep pushing no matter what. And we have to continue to let everyone know that we are a part of this country. We helped to build this country. We went through a lot of hell to be in this country and we deserve whatever we get in this country. And we have to continue to take our rightful place, uh, in this country, in this state and in this city as African-Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I really appreciate what our colleagues share here about the history of the country. Um, I think, uh, I'm more than proud to be associated with this resolution, especially thinking about leadership like Governor DeSantis, who actively works to counter us learning about history, using coded speak and coded language and watching the evolution or devolution of racism in this country. And I think about that when I think about our city that is standing in absolute opposition to that kind of thinking. A city that was founded by a Black Haitian immigrant. A city that is constantly under attack by right-wing narratives in ways that we know are racist without them having to use words that are clearly racist. We have to think about what it means in our own city, a city that is made great because of Black Chicagoans throughout its entire history. But also to acknowledge the amount of struggle and challenge we've had here in this city. When you think about the redlining, the segregation, the hundred years of police misconduct, the, the absolute struggle that people have had to overcome in our city, it is incumbent upon all of us to do our own homework about Black History here in Chicago. Because if we don't learn from our history, we are doomed to repeat it. Every decade, we keep having reactionary talk when it comes to public safety without talking about why the communities that people are concerned about are in the positions they're in. It is because of the lack of investment due to racist policies of this very body before any of us here were in it. And without having to have the conversations about what that means, we can't change it. We also have to talk about our Black leadership in this city. Leaders like Fred Hampton, who are very clear in their analysis. Leaders like, and I've said this before, who I believe to be our greatest mayor, Harold Washington, and how he brought people together even in spite of those challenges and those fights to show what a city we can be. So, I want to make sure that when we think about Chicago, we recognize this is a Black city. We are better for it, for its leadership, for its soul, for its arts, its culture. And we should not only think about talking about it during one month or during today because it's a resolution. It is a conversation we should constantly have. When we're looking at legislation, we should think about our own history and how we need to improve to make sure we have a city where people are healing, where we don't see the same level of criminality, of violence, of people being afraid. And we build the kind of city that leads to safety for all by talking about it. And so, I am in the debt of so many of our colleagues, Members of the Black Caucus, Alderman Metz, to be able to say that in this body in front of everyone, not only for our members to hear, because it's important for them to hear, but for the public to hear. So, when we're all having these conversations, if we're looking at the next two months, it is at the center of what we want our city to be. I want to make sure we're always talking about that. I always defer to our leadership. And I want to continue to work with you to make sure that Black excellence isn't something we're talking about as history. It's something we're talking about as future as we think about our generations, how we heal our city. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Vasquez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Farrell.
Thank you, Madam President, Member of the City Council. I too rise in support of this resolution. And I'll be very brief because I, um, somewhat want to echo the sentiments of, uh, my colleagues that have spoken before me and, uh, concur with what they've said. Uh, in part, today we celebrate, this month, we celebrate, uh, the successes of the Black community and their contributions to, uh, this city and this country, um, as a whole. But we also recognize, you know, the struggles that our community has had, um, in our history. And we recognize it in celebration that we could use those struggles as a catalyst toward the successes that we've achieved. Um, so I stand and rise in support of that because it's twenty twenty-three and, and we are still fighting for social and racial, economic, educational equality. Uh, and that's what I love about the word fight. You know, when you do see that you're lacking in something or something's not being presented to you on an equal basis, that you're going to fight your hardest to gain that right. And so, I support each one of you, no matter what color you may be, for breaking down barriers, uh, for helping those in your community, uh, to break down those barriers of racial inequality and social inequality and educational inequality. Because it's not just something we're doing as a Black people. We're doing it as everyone. And I would like to see that expand even more. So, I, I thank each of you as well, uh, for standing up in your communities against racism and those that you see, um, where we are not being treated on an equal basis. So, Madam President, it's an honor to stand in support of this resolution and thank you.
You're Alderman Talia Farrell. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. I too also rise in support of this resolution, um, and echoing all of my colleagues here today. And as I've done in the past during these, uh, these months, um, Black History Month, uh, honors African-American, the contributions of African-Americans in this country. And I think it's so important that we honor that history as Americans, the thing that we all are, regardless of the color of your skin. Um, and this is American history. So, anybody that would deny that, um, I think needs to, needs to get on board with what, uh, what history is and what we have to do to learn from it so that we don't, as, uh, my colleague Alderman Vasquez says, um, we don't repeat the, the mistakes of the past. So, I stand in, uh, support of this resolution, uh, in honor of all of the contributions of African-Americans, um, throughout history in this country. Um, and I stand in solidarity as well because we stand on the shoulders of those who came before us, who fought for civil rights, um, which every, uh, every one of us benefited from at the end of the day. Uh, and I'm so proud to be part of this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Uh, the Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. And I too rise, um, forgive me, I too rise in the wrong chair. Uh, to be associated with this resolution, um, you know, it's not lost upon me that, um, the Resolution Clause, um, reflecting on the, honoring the contributions and sacrifices of Black Americans who have shaped our nation, um, really hits home. It really hits home on a number of matters. The fact is, if it was not for the Civil Rights Movement, um, people in the Latino community and a number of communities, immigrants, um, would not have the same amount, uh, of opportunity if it weren't for the fight in the Civil Rights era and for Black leaders really standing up, uh, to oppression. I honor those achievements, that fight. I honor that today. I hope we honor it every day, not just this month. Uh, because the African-American community is so integral, so vibrant and so important to every one of our communities, even if our community is one in which predominantly another ethnic group. So, uh, briefly wanted to rise in support of this resolution and in support of this clause. And remember very succinctly that the Civil Rights Movement means so much for so many different communities. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Rodriguez. The Chair recognizes, um, Alderman Ramirez-Rosa.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm so glad that we are celebrating Black History Month in this chamber. Where would the city of Chicago be without Black Chicagoans? Where would we be without the contributions and the hard work of Black Chicagoans and Black Americans? So, it's well past time for this city to recognize, for this nation to recognize the importance of the Black community. Um, I'm hopeful that the Latino community and the Black community can come together more and more. Too often, we are at odds with each other. Too often, we are pitted against each other. We need to come together. Uh, and I know that the struggle for gay rights, the struggle for, uh, equality for Latinos, for people of color would be nowhere without Black people standing up and demanding their civil liberties. Um, I'm a big fan of house music and we'd have no house music without Black Chicagoans. So, I just want to, uh, you know, uh, stand up and be associated with this resolution. Um, and I'm so glad that this month we can recognize, uh, the contributions of Black Americans and Black Chicagoans. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any, any other Members of the Body wish to join us? Alderman Lopez.
Good morning, Madam President and Members of the City Council. I too rise in support today's recognition of Black History Month. But I think it's important for us to But I think it's important for us to not just give accolades on a piece of paper, but to actually address the issues that we know that the Black community, particularly the Black community in the city of Chicago, faces. I've had the great pleasure of running to represent one of the historic Black communities in the city of Chicago for nearly ten years, West Englewood. The residents there, while apprehensive at first on my first day walking around the neighborhood, have adopted me as one of their own, and I them as part of my family. As we talk about history and as we talk about the struggles of the African American experience, we know and can never lose sight, from the slave ships on down to segregation, what that has meant for individuals. For many of our seniors, many of our elders, this is not history that's forgotten in some textbook, but who remember vividly what it was like when they were the first on their block, when garbage cans were flying through their windows, when crosses were being burned in this city as the welcome mat in certain communities. But yet they persevered. They survived, and their families have thrived until now. As one of our colleagues spoke, referring to the values we need to impart in the history that we need to show our youth, we in this body must also do the same. And as I was sitting here, listening to a number of my colleagues speak today on the great things that the Black community has done in relation to the city of Chicago, allow me to remind you what the city of Chicago needs to address for the Black community. We still have unresolved issues when it comes to food access in the city of Chicago. We still have an unequal and unequitable procedure in addressing one of the most basic and fundamental needs of humanity, your right to eat, your right not to be hungry. And we see that even still in the greater Englewood community and spreading out from there. We see individuals who we welcome to our city giving pause to our current residents, feeling as though they have been forgotten while we open our arms to new people with new problems. We have yet to address manners in which we can lift up Black businesses and Black entrepreneurs, most notably by still not addressing the delays in certification when it comes to being certified as a minority business enterprise. Additionally, when it comes to our minority program, it has been nearly three years since its introduction, both in calling for direct payments to subcontractors who are WMBE and often those that cannot float six months in delays from their general contractors. But we have yet to take up the issue on whether or not being an American descendant of slavery or a freeman should be its own classification within the WMBE program. Lastly, when it comes to the values and to our babies, we have seen where we have upended the funding of early childhood programs with known Gold Star-rated providers within the Black community for the purposes of giving those dollars to different untested groups. There is more than enough funding to be able to lift both new and old partners. These are just a number of issues on the books right now that we did not coordinate, by the way. But these are just a number of issues that we can address in this moment, in this month, when it comes to Black history. Because this should not be a discussion about Black history, but the future of African Americans in Chicago. We have this in our power now so that everything that I've listed can be used for a historical reference later, once we've achieved those goals. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The chair recognizes Alderman Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I will also like to raise in support of this resolution. And on behalf of our community, especially during these times where we see so much polarization and the pitching of our communities against each other, it is important to recognize the great history and contributions of the Black community in Chicago, a community that I also had the pleasure to represent, like the Abla Holmes community, George Collins, Barbara Jean Wright, communities that are struggling to survive in the midst of tremendous challenges. Here, the invocation of the founder of Chicago, a Haitian immigrant, but yet we see with great contrast how Haitian immigrants are met in the border and the great inequalities that we continue to deal with and what represents to be a Black resident of Chicago and across the country. We cannot ignore the tragedies and the recent tragedies that continue to affect especially Black men. And we're remiss not to mention the great tragedy of Tyreke Nichols when we continue to see that kind of violence in 2023. I think it is upon this council to deliver on the promises of equity and justice for all and to condemn the level of violence that is not only coming in other states, but we have a very fresh inner mind on challenges with police misconduct and brutality as a recent settlement during the John Birch regime. That is recent history that must be remembered and reckoned with so that we can change that terrible legacy. We're going to be hearing a lot about violence in the city of Chicago, but rarely we talk about how we got here and how those fifty schools that were closed and eighty-eight percent of those closures affected Black communities and the ripple effects that this has on our Black youth today. The issues of Black residents are the issues for all of us. There will be no freedom for any of us until there's freedom for everyone. When we talk about food insecurity, when we talk about instability in homes, we got to remember the redlining policies, the CHA land grabs, and the many other policies that make it challenging for a community to thrive. And the conditions that are created here in our own city can be addressed if there's the political will to do so with investment, with equity for all, but especially those communities that have been disinvested for so long. I think we pledge today to honor with this resolution with actions more than rhetoric and to make a call to listen to those people, young people, that have presented even resolutions in front of us, like the peace book, so that we can address the violence and despair in the city of Chicago. And this council has a lot of responsibility to deliver on the resolutions that we introduce. And again, we rise in support on this important resolution. And I'll also commit to continue to work with Alderman Sawyer on the reparations resolution and commitments that we have made. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in support of the resolution honoring Black History Month and want to echo some of the comments of my colleague around the discussions that are occurring and those elected officials in other states trying to erase history. We have to remember that everybody contributes to history, especially the African American community. And so I just wanted to stand in solidarity in making sure that as a body that appropriates billions of dollars a year, that we're talking about equity and parity and making sure that every community is rising. A strong Black community means a strong city of Chicago. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Villegas. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise in support of this resolution because part of the resolution mentions ongoing oppressions and the advocacy for a self-determined life in a democratic society in the United States and beyond. And the part about the beyond is what struck me the most. Often, at least when I was going through school, we learned about Black History Month, and we had a few Black history, historical figures that we learned about. But we forget about the achievements and the contributions that were made by African Americans to the rest of the continent and to not only North America, Central America, and South America. We forget that Afro-Latinos are part of our shared history. And we learn about MLK, but we don't learn necessarily or go into historical depth about the very founder of Chicago, who is Haitian-American, who's Haitian and came to the United States. We don't learn about Vicente Guerrero, who led Mexican independence, but was Afro-Latino. And part of the reason why I stand is because it is not enough to have just one mention of Black History Month. Black history is American history. It is North American history. It is Latino history. And it is not just enough to celebrate it. It is a fight that we have to continue, and we have to face and ask ourselves, are we doing enough? So I rise in support of this resolution because of that fight, because there are still so many Afro-Latinos in the rest of our countries, especially those of us who are Latinos who come from other countries that we do not recognize them, that they do not have the same rights that the rest of their countrymen do. And that's why the work that we do here at City Council is so important to make sure that the children in Chicago understand that there is a history, a shared history that goes far beyond Chicago and the United States. It goes all the way down to the very tip of Brazil, of Colombia, of Belize, of Mexico. And we have to remember that and teach it to our children so that they do not forget and that we don't forget. Thank you.
Any other members of the body that wish to speak to this resolution? As I was listening to you all speak, a famous James Brown song came to my mind. Say it loud, I'm Black and I'm proud. Say it loud, I'm Black and I'm proud. For too long, too many of us, too many of our children, have been made to feel that we are lessers because we are Black. I bumped up against racism growing up in the sixties and seventies every single day. I saw it in the eyes of my parents, who suffered under the horrific, violent yoke of the Jim Crow South that shaped and formed and limited their lives and their ability to dream big. I saw it every day myself when I was denied opportunities as a young Black child simply because of the color of my skin. We recently celebrated the birth and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, who was the same age as my mother, ninety-four years old had he lived. People often ask, when Dr. King was here, what would he say about who we are and what we've become? And a year since, he passed from this earth. As many have said, we have lots to be proud of as African Americans and as Americans and the progress that we've made. But our journey is not over, far from it. We also have many things that we must continue to work on as a people, but also as a larger community, brothers and sisters, still figuring out how we unite together and build bridges towards each other. Alderman Burnett, I think, said it best. We are strong. We are survivors. Through slavery, segregation, systemic racism, mass incarceration, and so many other things that have denied us the opportunity to really embrace the full vestiges of citizenship, and yet we are here because we, as African Americans, are the epitome of resilience. And yes, there's more work for us to do. But I stand here, all of you, and say it once again. I am Black, and I am proud. Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move passes of these resolutions and the ordinance.
No objection, so ordered. To co-sponsor either the Black History Resolution or any of the others, please make sure that you notify the clerk.
Return to the regular order of business.
There are no objections, so ordered. Next up, ladies and gentlemen, communications, Madam Clerk.
Communications from our honor, the mayor, to the honorable, the City Council of City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Housing and Transportation here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of tax-dipped housing revenue bonds for the benefit of the Preservation Portable Housing LLC. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of a commissioner of planning and development I transmit here with an ordinance correcting the sixty-second amending ordinance to the administrative service agreement, Soma Core 504 Incorporated. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreements with the Chicago Park District to provide TIP funds for improvement at various city parks. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIP redevelopment agreement with Dank House to reimburse development costs. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIP redevelopment agreement with one and only LLC to reimburse development costs of the dispose of city-owned parcel. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Executive Director of the Public Building Commission I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing building and facility-related permit and license fee waivers for the Public Building Commission. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Urban Equities Incorporated for the sale and development of a city-owned property located at 5021 South Wabash Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties under the adjacent neighbors' land acquisition program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Ebenezer Missionary Baptist Church to provide and adopt a landmark fund. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Command on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Greenstone United Methodist Church to provide and adopt a landmark fund. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Command on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Affairs I- Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Commissioner of Cultural Affairs and Special Events, I transmit here with the 2023 Annual Special Events Ordinance. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of the Commissioner of Assets, Information, and Services, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a franchise agreement and energy equity agreement with Commonwealth Edison Company. After two committees being called, it will go to rolls. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments be appreciated. Going back to the last I just read, Commonwealth Edison Company referred to a joint committee compromising the members of the Committee on Finance and the members of the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy will go to the rolls committee. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit here with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Lori Lightfoot, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Funding loan notification of City of Chicago multifamily housing revenue note Roosevelt Square, Phase 3B, Series 2023A, Series 2023B1, and Series 2023B2, draft of Chicago Department of Housing Year 2023 Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Qualified Allocation Plan, City Treasurer Report regarding overall income on total holdings across all funds held by Treasurer's Office for Year 2022, Office of Inspector General's follow-up audit of municipal depository designation process. I, City Clerk Valencia, also inform the City Council that all those matters were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on January 18, 2022, to be required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or one or more newspapers are published in pamphlet form on February 1, 2023, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the journal proceedings of the City Council of the City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago, which referred to the Committee on Finance, and correction of December 14, 2022, City Council Journal Proceedings, which referred to Committee on Committee and Rolls. Your Honor, that concludes the report and communications from the mayor and other city officers.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, committee reports, starting with finance. Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which met on January 31, 2023. Item number one is the communication recommending a proposed ordinance to repeal the TIF redevelopment project and plan amendment ordinance is passed in the wrong order. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move to concur with the committee's favorable recommendation by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open. Please hit refresh and submit your vote. The voting is now open. If you need support, tech support, raise your hand. Alderman Riley. Please hit refresh and submit your vote. If you need support, please raise your hand. Alderman Calafaro, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Brookins. I will now take a voice vote. Alderman Lasbada. Alderman Lasbada, yes. Alderman King is not in her chair. Alderman Brookins. All righty, got it. Alderman Scott. Alderman Scott is a yes. Alderman Calafaro. Alderman Calafaro is a yes. Alderman Cardona. Alderman Cardona is a yes. Alderman Villegas, not in his seat. Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz is a yes. Alderman Riley. Riley is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a yes. Alderman Haddon is not in her seat. Any other votes I missed? Anyone walk in? All right, the voting is now closed.
The nays are zero. Alderman Kapelman on the motion for reconsideration.
Madam President, I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The motion for reconsideration fails. Chairman Wegasback.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two is the communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the approval of Amendment Number One to the Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan for Expansion of the Project Area. I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number One of the Expanded Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area as redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number One to the Redevelopment Plan for the Expanded Madden Wells Redevelopment Project Area. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of Amendment Number Six to the Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan for Expansion of the Project Area. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item six is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number Six of the Expanded Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area as a redevelopment area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number Six to provide tax increment allocation financing for the enlarged Bronzeville Redevelopment Project Area. If there's no one wishing to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of Amendment Number Three to the 43rd Cottage Grove Redevelopment Plan for Expansion of the Project Area. So, Madam President, unless someone wished to speak on that item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And item number nine is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute the designation of Amendment Number Three of the Expanded 43rd Cottage Grove Redevelopment Project Area as a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item 10 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute approval of adoption of the Tax Increment Allocation Financing for Amendment Number Three to the Redevelopment Plan for the Expanded 43rd Cottage Grove Redevelopment Project. Unless someone wishes to speak, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, item number 11 is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance regarding the authority to enter into and execute a redevelopment agreement with the American Blues Theater, NFP, and provision of tax increment financing assistance in the amount of $2.5 million for the construction of a theater facility at 5627 North Lincoln Avenue, located in the 40th Ward. Unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider, with the exception of Alderman Lopez, who wished to be recorded as voting no.
With that exception noted, no further objections, so ordered.
Item 12 consists of the authorization for the issuance of charitable solicitation.
Chairman Wegasback. Did you raise your hand, sir? Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, good afternoon, members of City Council. Yes, I am reaffirming my opposition to this item, not because I believe that this is not a worthy or deserving project in the city's 40th ward, but as was noted in committee by a number of members, the issue of priority is something that I take exception to. Projects throughout Chicago seem to have a disproportionately unequal chance at getting TIF funds for reasons yet to be determined. We have spoken at length twice in the Committee on Finance with representatives from the Department of Planning and Development. And I want to thank Mr. Jeffries and Chairman Wegasback for getting me an answer from yesterday's exchange with regards to DPD's recommendations for the use of TIF funds. For the members, you should know that this was actually provided to you this morning with three criteria to address what was raised in committee, which was how are determinations made? The three categories that we were provided were a demonstration of need and feasibility, alignment with community plans, and alignment with city goals and priorities. While I accept this as an answer for today so that this project can move forward as promised yesterday, there are issues that we still have to address with what exactly that means, particularly when we see projects throughout the city of Chicago that have been introduced or applied for years ago, meet all of those requirements, and yet are still languishing for a response, while others seem to zip right through in breakneck speed. This isn't just something that impacts my ward, but we've heard about several projects yesterday. And I'm sure if we looked at all of the applications, we would notice that their application dates and their approval dates are not consistent, are cherry-picked for winners and losers by ward. And that is not something that is either equitable or equal. We must do better. And I hope that my colleagues here today and on the Finance Committee in the future, the future months, will take this up with the Department of Planning and Development because the last thing any of us should have to report back to our communities are that projects that we have been working on, that will put people to work, that will address housing, will address infrastructure, address investment, are no longer being played games with by individuals accountable to no one but the administration. So with that, Madam President, I ask that I be, again, recorded as no on this item. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Alderman Lopez, as well as Alderwoman Hairston and others that during the Finance Committee raised up the very real and valid issue about what the process is like when certain projects are moving and certain ones aren't. I recognize that this one is for a group, there was a theater group that began in the 80s looking to establish its first place and doing the work necessary. So I appreciate the Alderman also saying, you know, one project isn't the issue. It's about the lack of transparency and accountability in the process. And so I'm grateful for that conversation. And if any of our colleagues seek to work together on legislation to make it more transparent, make it more accountable, make sure people get reporting as to how things are moving and what the holdups are, I welcome it and look forward to working together because I think it's a conversation we have to have in the city when we talk about prerogative or other conversations. So I just wanted to make sure to be on record for that. And again, think that it's the right direction to go to, to have more transparency in it. So, thank you, Madam President.
Are you recorded as an objection, sir? Noting the objection again of Alderman Lopez. No further objections, so ordered. Chairman Wegasback, please continue.
Yes, Madam President, we were already on item number 12. This consists of the authorizations for the issuance of charitable solicitation or tag day permits for Planned Parenthood Federation of America for February 1 through October 14, 2023. If there's no objection, I ask these items be placed on the omnibus.
I'm hearing no objections, so ordered. Did you say February 1 to October?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Moving on to settlements, item 13 consists of one order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement in the case of Talat-Era Imam, individually and as independent administrator of the estate of Sayed Muhammad Fatah Imam, deceased, versus the city of Chicago in the case number 20L2964 in the amount of $800,000. The item received favorable approval by the committee. Unless someone wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the corresponding unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Villegas.
Madam President, Madam Clerk, if you could record me as voting yes on item one of the finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
So reflected. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And Madam President, that concludes the report of the Committee on Finance.
Thank you. Next up, the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Chairman Dow.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on the Budget and Government Operations, which held a committee meeting on January 25, 2023. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Number one, a substitute ordinance concerning an amendment to the annual appropriation ordinance year 2023 within Fund Number 925 for the Departments of Public Health, the Department of Family and Support Services, and the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, a substitute ordinance concerning the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Public Building Commission regarding accessibility work on various city-owned facilities. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman Dow. Next up, the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Chairman Mitz.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a virtual meeting on January 30, 2023. The following item were passed by the committee. Item number 02023-263, an ordinance to amend the municipal code designating the 26th precinct of the 23rd Ward as restricted residential zone, prohibiting home cultivation and new or additional cultivation center, craft brewers and processing, infusers, dispensaries, and transport in organization. I move that the City Council incur in the recommendation of the light- I move that the City Council incur in the recommendation of the license committee and pass this item by the same roll call vote as item number one of the Committee on Finance report and the same unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two, zero-two zero-two-three dash six-one-three, an ordinance renewing restricted residential zone pursuant to chapter four dash one-seven of the municipal code. Alderman Quinn, thirteenth ward, I move passage of the item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
There were seven ordinance regarding moratoriums in the twenty-fourth ward, thirty-fifth ward, forty-second ward, forty-fourth, and the fiftieth ward. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Chairman. Next up, the Committee on Public Safety, Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of City Council, reporting for your committee on public safety for which a virtual meeting was held January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. There was one item before the committee to which the committee recommended due pass in ordinance two zero-two-three dash nine-zero-four for the amendment of municipal code four dash six-eight dash zero-eight-zero recommending rules for private ambulances for private ambulances in chapter eight dash four, adding new section eight dash four-zero-seven-six regarding assault against emergency workers. Madam President, if anyone, if there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, if not, I mean, there are no objections.
Recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chair. The onus of this ordinance was because I was stopped by a Chicago firefighter paramedic a few months ago. He told me a story about how attacks on medics responding to nine-one-one calls rendering aid was on the rise. I quickly reached out to Local Two. Parallel to that, I did my own research, found a study by the Center for Disease Control. Yes, in fact, attacks on medics across our country is significantly up the last few years. I thought it was important that we strengthen any laws on the books, any ordinances on the books to protect our first responders. Over the course of the last two days, I've been approached by some of my colleagues and some organizations, including NAMI, American Civil Liberties Union, and others who have concerns. I want to be clear to everybody in this room. This ordinance is strictly written to do more to protect our paramedics and first responders. That was the only intention of this ordinance. But I understand there are concerns. On the floor today, I spoke with my colleague Alderman Rosa from the thirty-fifth ward, my colleague Alderman Martin from the forty-seventh ward, and we agreed they're going to put together a group, we're going to talk about what those intended consequences might be to make sure that this ordinance can only be used to protect first responders, paramedics responding to scenes. Now more than ever, we need to stand with them and let them know we have their backs. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Shea. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this ordinance. I think a job well done by Chairman O'Shea, as well as firefighter local union too, firefighters union. I'll make mine quick firsthand. I know Jim, Nick, my president in the back, have been on the other side of this and have seen um, seen how dangerous it is out there and and what can happen to our paramedics. In my case, it was an EMT riding on an EMT ambulance, or just a firefighter on a on a rig, whether it's an engine or a truck. These are, these occasions happen more often than you think, or more often than you know about. Some of the firefighters don't even report it after it happens, they just kind of shrug it off and think that's another day, another dollar, another time at work trying to get through the day. I think this is a brilliant piece of legislation or a piece of ordinance that Alderman O'Shea has put together. I do believe we can expand it as well to other departments in the city of Chicago. I'd love to be a part of it as well, but this is this is a long time coming, and I think this is a great thing for all my brothers and sisters on the fire department. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
I want to thank Alderman Matt O'Shea for bringing this ordinance forward and for committing to work with mental health advocates, with civil liberties groups to ensure that there are no unintended consequences with this ordinance. You know, the assault charge is very different from battery charge. A lot of people don't understand that assault doesn't mean necessarily physical contact. And so we want to make sure that people mental health crisis, that this is not something that the city brings against them. We want to make sure that peaceful protesters, that this is not something that the city brings against them as a result of passage. So I have heard from a number of groups, NAMI, the Collaborative for Community Wellness, civil liberty advocacy groups, the Appleseed Foundation, the Public Defender's Office. So I really want to appreciate Alderman O'Shea for committing to meet with those groups, with the backers of this ordinance committing to meet with those groups, so that we can ensure that this ordinance does not have unintended consequences, because I think my understanding is it's the intent of the sponsor and everyone else that this primarily protect our first responders, our firefighters, our paramedics, and that it not be used to criminalize people who already are facing a lot of challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rosen. I think Alderman O'Shea's been very, very clear from the very beginning, and in his remarks today says a very specific targeted focus and that it's to protect our first responders. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to repeat what has already been said, but actually, if there's no objection, I would make a motion to include all members of the body as a co-sponsor to this item.
Will vote if they'd like to, sir. Why don't you just call for a roll call?
Actually, I'm asking if they could be included as co-sponsors, Madam President.
I I don't think that's appropriate. I think members who.
I think the answer's been given. Thank you, Madam President.
The chair recognizes, um, I guess I'm recognizing Alderman Talat Faro.
Thank you, Madam President. If there are no objections, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote.
And Talat Faro. I, um, the chair recognizes Alderman Spazato, who wanted to speak to this.
Sorry, sorry, Chairman and friend. Thank you, Madam President. Of course, you know, I'd have to say something about this, so, but thanks, Matt, appreciate it. Thirty years ago, when I came on the job, this was basically unheard of, and I worked on the west side for my first few years on the job, and, you know, it's some tough neighborhoods, and we were very well received and very well respected, and pretty much anywhere you would go, in the northwest side, the north side, the south side, respected everywhere, but something's happened to this world, people just don't have respect. And I'm I'm not so sure it's just firemen or paramedics, sorry, President Tracy, but I think we need to expand this a little bit more, and I think it needs to be expanded. And and we could talk about this later, and I'm not trying to hold anything up, but it's and and my friend also sitting behind me brought up to me that, you know, traffic managing, traffic, anybody with a uniform nowadays, traffic management aides. I have a friend of mine, animal care and control, they have issues and problems. We have meter maids, so anybody that wears a badge or a uniform, I'd like to, you know, look into this in the future to add them, to put a substitute ordinance in there. Obviously, I'm not trying to stop anything, I'm just talking, just people have gotten crazier and crazier and crazier, and I don't know what the lawlessness is that's going on in this world, but I obviously support this, and I appreciate you, Matt, and great idea. Just all's I'm saying is in the future, we just need to add more to this, Chairman and Mayor, so thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato, all good points. Now back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Madam President. If there are no objections, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Fin- Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Alderman Silverstein.
Madam President, if I could ask for just a brief moment to make a statement on public safety, regarding public safety?
Are you, hold on one second. Are you asking for leave of the body to suspend the rules to allow you to speak?
Yes, I would like.
Can we finish the committee reports first, ma'am?
Well, it was appropriate that it came right after public safety, because it is regarding public safety.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you know, crime has touched every corner of our city. Too offer, too often neighborhoods feel forgotten and ignored. Twenty twenty-two was a heartbreaking year in the fiftieth ward. We saw a significant increase in hate crimes, shootings, carjackings like we've never seen before. Our neighbors are afraid to walk down the street, have their kids play outside, and go to their places of worship. After another shooting death in January, my office started collecting testimonials from our neighbors. We wanted to shine a light on the crime happening in our community. In just a few short days, more than one hundred local residents sent me powerful statements on how crime has affected all our lives. Now, two weeks later, that number stands at more than two hundred. As I told my constituents, I would present them to you, Mayor, and I'm here to do that today. I look forward to working with the council, with you, Mayor, and with the Chicago Police Department to help address these issues. We must come up with solutions. We all deserve to feel safe in our neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
And Alderman Silverstein, as you and I have talked about at length multiple times over the last few weeks, it's important for you to get to know your district commanders. It's important for you to get to know and actually know your deputy chief of patrol and to work with them in the first instance, and I keep encouraging you to do that. I've appreciated the opportunities of being your community at community roundtables, but in the first instance, you really do need to work with the local police and commanders, and it'd be great if you supported the police and the funding that is necessary to keep them strong, to keep them healthy, and to make sure that we can continue to hire resources to support all of our fifty wards. Thank you, Alderman.
And that's what I've been doing, Mayor. I speak to my commanders every, almost every single day.
Thank you.
I'm a huge supporter of them, and this is a very important matter in my community.
Thank you, Alderman. And and I'm sure that if you, because of the importance, you'll continue to actually vote for the resources that support the police. You can wait, we're going to continue on with committee reports. You can hand it to staff. Next up, the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Chairman Brookins.
Got here quick. Good afternoon, Madam President. Reporting on your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, a meeting which was held on January twenty-sixth, the following ordinances were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages two and three include twelve ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local Alderman from wards three, eleven, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-seven, forty-five, forty-seven, and forty-eight. On page three, item four, amended municipal code section two, one oh-two dash zero-three-zero, an ordinance number zero-two zero-two-two dash three-nine-eight-five, was re-referred to the pedestrian and traffic safety, so no vote will be taken for this item. Page four includes three vacation ordinances located in the eighth, twenty-second, and twenty-fourth ward. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move passage to these items by the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, ladies and gentlemen, matters on the agreed calendar, Chairman Harris.
If I receive from the clerk, Anna M. Valencia, a toll of two hundred and twelve items proposed for the Greek calendar consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from the following Alderman, Alderman Sawyer, Alderman Harris, Alderman Burke, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Coleman, Alderman Brookins, Alderman Viascos, Alderman Gardner, Alderman Martin, and Alderman Kapelman, I move passage of the agreed calendar and the omnibus.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Next up, new business, Mr. Clerk. I will call the wards, beginning with the fiftieth.
Claims, free permits, licenses, free exemptions, which are referred to the Committee on Finance, zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants and privileges granted over the public way which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, and exemption for physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Osterman has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero-twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of North Broadway and West Glen Lake Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Martin has proposed or proposed resolution to call for public hearings on adoption of ranked choice voting for Chicago's municipal elections, which is referred to the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight. I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear you. Two committees have been called, the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. The matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman Martin and Alderman Ramirez-Rosa have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code title two by adding a new chapter two dash one sixty-six entitled Transparency in Long-Term City Contracts, which is referred to the Committee on Environmental Protection and Energy. Alderman Kapelman has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter two dash eight by adding a new section two dash eight dash zero-ninety to require quarterly reports from Department of Family and Support Services on efforts to address homelessness, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Tony has proposed order for issuance of a permit for signed signboard at twenty-eight forty-four North Broadway, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Vasquez and Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez have proposed resolution for recognition of historical and cultural significance of Naroon Iranian New Year, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Vasquez and others have proposed resolution to call on subject, the call for subject matter hearings on health costs of negative effects posed by fossil fuel companies, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Cairo Tony Ortiz, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez and others have proposed resolution to call for the Illinois General Assembly to pass House Bill Two and Senate Bill Seventy-eight to allow community-based organizations and healthcare providers to operate overdose prevention sites, which is referred to the Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alderman Urban has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Burnett has proposed a resolution to call on the Illinois General Assembly to amend Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act to include public safety programs and security services within redevelopment project areas, which are referred, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alderman Scott has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Mrs. Ernest and Gloria Jenkins Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Devaris and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code title four by modifying various sections to further regulate shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Rodriguez has proposed order for the issuance of a permit for signed signboard at twenty-six thirty-seven South Pulaski, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Brookins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero-twenty-three to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Ninety-Fifth Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Taylor has proposed ordinance for amendment of the Plaid of Jars re-subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Coleman has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero-twenty-three to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Sixty-third Street, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Lopez has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section two dash ninety-two dash four fifty regarding granting of reduction or waiver or waiver of commitment to minority to minority-owned and women-owned business enterprises, which is referred to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Alderman Sedlowski Garza has proposed ordinance for vacation of public ways in the area bounded by South Avenue O, East One Hundred Seventeenth Street, South Burley Avenue, and East One Hundred Sixteenth Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code section four dash sixty dash zero-twenty-three to allow additional packaged goods licenses on portion of West Armitage Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alderman Laspada also has proposed resolution to call for hearings on oversight of grant planning and implementation of Chicago Recovery Plan, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. And a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorary Sam Bell Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Laspada and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code chapter eleven dash twelve regarding utility bill relief program, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all the medic introductions.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to suspend the ruse for the reading and recognizing of a memorial resolution that I submitted to the clerk's office on behalf of this body for the life of Larry Rogers Jr., Sr. I said senior. I said senior. I said junior, senior? I'm sorry. Thank you. Memorial resolution celebrate the life of Larry R. Rogers Jr., Rogers Sr. Where Larry Rogers Sr.'s loving family man, fierce advocate, and trailblazing attorney passed away on January 19, 2023 at the age of 75. Whereas the Chicago City Council has been fond of Mr. Rogers' passing by the Honorable David H. Moore, Alderman 17th Ward, and this mayor, Lori Lightfoot. A native of Roseland, and one of the founding partners, Power Rogers and Smith, now Power Rogers LLC. Larry Rogers Sr. dedicated his nearly 40-year career to representing the most difficult personal injury and wrongful death cases, championing the rights of the little guy and fighting for those who cannot fight for themselves. And whereas a man of humble beginnings, at one time juggling three jobs to support his family during the day while also attending law school at DePaul University at night, Larry seized opportunities to invest in himself and provide for his family and community, becoming one of the most successful, respected, influential trial lawyers in the country. Whereas while working at the gas station across from Comiskey Park, Mr. Rogers met Joe Power Jr. and the two became fast friends. And whereas Power recommended that Larry apply for law clerk position at his firm and finish law school to fill the void of black attorneys at the time, Larry took his advice and the two founded the Power Rogers Law Firm after Larry graduated in 1983. And whereas the Michael Jordan of law before Michael Jordan was the Michael Jordan of basketball, Larry's record of success started early in his career in his very first trial in Cook County. He won a $27 million verdict involving syntax baby formula shortly after the Department of Justice declined to press charges against the company whose product was tied to learning disabilities, the largest personal injury verdict in Illinois history at the time. And whereas later Larry recovered many multimillion-dollar personal injury verdicts and settlements, including winning $55 million for a brain-damaged woman, the largest malpractice verdict that went to judgment in Illinois history. A leader in the legal field, Mr. Rogers was elected president of both the Cook County Bar Association and the Illinois Trial Lawyers Association, serving as the latter's first black president. Mr. Rogers also recognized nationally as a highly skilled personal injury litigator and was named one of the 10 most influential Illinois lawyers by American Lawyer Media and one of the nation's top 10 litigators by the National Law Journal. Whereas during his distinguished career, in addition to membership in the Chicago Bar Association, the Cook County Bar Association, the American Bar Association, the Association of Trial Lawyers of America, and the Illinois State Bar Association, Larry Rogers Sr. was honored with numerous awards, including the Distinguished Alumni Award from St. Xavier University, the DePaul University College of Law Alumni Award for outstanding service to the legal profession, honorary doctor's degrees from DePaul University College of Law and St. Xavier University, the John Paul Stevens Award, the Chicago Bar Association's Highest and Most Prestigious Award, the Leonard Emmering Lifetime Achievement Award awarded by the Illinois Trial Lawyers, and the Earl B. Dickerson Award from the Chicago Bar Association, which honors outstanding minority lawyers whose careers at the bar emulate courage and dedication in making the law the key to justice for all in our society. Whereas a passionate mentor who believed in the adage, "You can't be what you can't see," and opening up opportunities for others, Mr. Rogers actively gave back to his communities, whether advising young lawyers how to succeed or hosting annual congratulating dinners for valedictorians and salutatorians from the Inglewood neighborhood and their parents. And whereas his advice to young lawyers was simple but powerful, work hard, maintain your integrity, and be willing to associate with others in your field, get to meet them and learn from them, whether they are African-American or white or whatever their ethnic background may be. And whereas a firm belief in the uplifting power of education, Mr. Rogers served on the board of numerous educational institutions, including St. Xavier University, Push for Excellence, Providence St. Mel, the University of Illinois Chicago School of Law, formerly John Marshall Law School, DePaul University, and DePaul University College of Law and City Colleges. And whereas Larry was the patriarch of three generations of lawyers with seven relatives working in the legal field, his son, Dominique, is an injury attorney, I mean, his grandson, Dominique, is an injury attorney, his son Larry Rogers Jr. is an attorney and partner at his father's firm, his daughter Anne Marie is a court reporter, his stepson Frederick is an attorney, his niece Cameron Colvin is an employment attorney, his nephew Sean works as a real estate litigation, and his grandson Trevor now works for injury law as well. Continuing the felony tradition, his grandfather Aaron Rogers also recently accepted into several law schools. And whereas when not in court, Mr. Rogers could often be found near the court at the United Center as Chicago Bull season ticket holder, Mr. Rogers is also a huge Bears fan and enjoys spending time on his Sea Race sport boat on Lake Michigan, which he occasionally looked to Florida and the Bahamas for vacation. And whereas Larry was a great friend, lawyer, and law partner, but most importantly to him was being a wonderful father, grandfather, and human being, everyone who knew him best loved him more, and he will be sorely missed by his family, friends, and colleagues, and we will be remembered for the indelible mark he made on the legal profession. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the member of this city council of the city of Chicago gather here this first day of February 2023, do hereby extend our condolences to the family and friends of Larry Rogers Sr., and be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be prepared and presented to the family of Larry Rogers Sr. as a sign of our honor and respect. And I may add that both resolutions and memorials was read on the Senate floor and by Senator Dick Durbin and on the House floor by Congresswoman Robin Kelly, and we could not bypass this without the city in which he comes from recognize the great work that he's done for the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Hairston.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to ask my colleague, several of us, we all loved Larry Rogers, a lot of us that are lawyers on the council, so I would ask, leave, if we could hold this and then maybe contact his family and do a more appropriate resolution where we all could be prepared to speak, maybe at the next city council meeting? Pardon me? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So you're accepting that friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Mitchell. Approval of the journal.
Madam President, I am not aware of any corrections to the journal from the January 18, 2023 regular meeting and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Next up, unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Brookins and calls for a vote on 02022-2395, which was deferred and published on January 18, 2023.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Brookins.
Madam President, before I go to the old business, just so that the record is clear, on, when I read my report on Page 3, Item 4, Amendment to Municipal Code, Section 2-102-030, the ordinance number 02022-3985, that was re-referred to pedestrian and traffic safety, if I didn't say it, I meant to say that if there's no objections, I ask that that also be re-referred by the most, the last most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and unsuccessful associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Madam President, with respect to this matter, I'd like to pause and allow Alderman Taylor to speak on it.
Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I wanted to say thank you to Inglewood, United and Build, and Team Inglewood for their support and understanding to this issue. Norfolk Southern is a $59.7 billion company, and an agreement was signed back in 2014 when I and a bunch of my coworkers weren't here. But the thought that Norfolk Southern, who got rich off the blacks of slaves, won't even commit to giving this community the little things that they're asking for. And so I've been in office since 2019, and not one time did they come to talk to me about this RDA that A. I did not sign and B. that I did not agree to. Instead of Norfolk Southern working directly with me, they talk to the majority of my coworkers and try to organize around me. And so you're attacking somebody who is paid to represent the people in your community. What does that say about Norfolk Southern? What does that say about us as a council? They could afford to put gates around their property. They could afford to fix the streets. They could afford to do beautification. And the thought that it's not in the RDA is not on the people in our community. It's on them. There is nowhere in the world they are sit up in the middle of a black and brown community and they do the bare minimum. And I'm almost ashamed and embarrassed that somebody would sign off on some crap and did not do any follow-through because they did not make sure people got jobs in the community. They did not make sure they were going to do hiring affairs. They did not make sure that the black folks from that community get that contract. What does that say about us, but we'll celebrate black history, huh? And Alderwoman, all due respect, what you feeling, black people been feeling for years? And so now it's join the club, we got jackets. I am tired of sitting in a space where I'm ignored and not listened to just because of the color of my skin. And I don't care how many flags y'all put up in here, I don't care how many colors y'all change on the bug, that still does not give y'all the right to overrun the people in the community. Now, I ain't start this fight, but I'm good at finishing. And so Norfolk Southern and the city have agreed to the terms that the community are asking, and that's all I was asking for. I want to thank the Black Caucus and members of the Latino Caucus for standing with me because sometimes it's easier to take the check and look away. And so I thank the people who stood with me and this community to say enough is enough. And so I'm asking y'all today, I am going to vote yes, and I'm only voting yes because somebody made me keep my word, and I promise this community that I will fight forward and stand up for it, and they're okay with it, so I'm okay with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chairman Brookins.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I want to commend my colleague and my member, Jeanette Taylor, for tires advocacy with respect to this. For those who don't know, that this is a project, is part of a larger project in the Create portfolio of projects, where it's a $100 million project and only $15 million out of that $100 million have been spent so far. I'm sure that Ms. Taylor will make sure that this $85 million that is yet to be spent, that Norfolk Southern will do right by our communities in hiring and letting people know. This is a great project, a much-needed project for the vitality of the city of Chicago in getting traffic in and out, train traffic in and out and around our city. So, Madam President, if nobody else wants to speak, I move that this passage of 02022-29, I'm sorry, -2395 regarding vacation of public streets and alleys.
Time, so the record is.
I got it. I move for passage of 02022-2395 regarding vacation of public streets and alleys for the expansion of Norfolk Southern Railways 47th Street Intermodal Facility, which was deferred and published at the January 18, 2023 city council meeting by the first most favorable vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Oh, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Alderman Kapelman.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a question, I, this is Black History Month, and it's so important that we correct the wrongs that have been, that have occurred, and I commend Alderwoman Taylor for doing that. We're also charged with acting in a fiduciary manner, so I need to hear from corporate counsel. Would this subject the city to a lawsuit that we could lose?
What are you talking about?
You're versing this?
We're passing.
Alderman Kapelman, I just asked for clarification of your question. Are you asking whether or not a vote yes to approve this?
Yes.
I don't know that the corporation counsel can answer that question.
Okay.
On the fly.
Great. I want to just check, just make sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes David Moore.
For the record, which I support moving forward with this, but it's not part of the Create project, it's just a Norfolk Southern project.
No, whole portfolio of Create, which is a bunch of different projects, this is just one of many.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you.
Alderman Mitchell. Are you aware of any other unfinished business? Alderman Mitchell.
I'm aware of one piece of unfinished, no, I'm sorry. I'm not aware of any further unfinished business.
Thank you. Next up, miscellaneous business. Alderman Mitchell.
All right. There was one notice filed pursuant to Rule 41, but it was, has since been withdrawn. I'm not aware of any further miscellaneous business.
Sir, the date and time of the next meeting?
I handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk.
Being ordained by the City Council of Chicago, Section 1, the next regular meeting of the City Council of Chicago shall be held on Tuesday, February 7, 2023, beginning at 1:30 p.m. in the council chamber on second floor, City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be forced from and after its passage. Tuesday, February 7, 2023, beginning at 1:30 p.m.
Alderman Mitchell?
Nope. February 7, 1:30 p.m.
Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hold on one second. The Chair recognizes Alderman.
That we lay on the table, the motion for February 7 meeting.
There's a, a motion to lay on the table that we come back for the next city council meeting on February 7 at 1:30. Before I clear, a yes vote is to not return on February 7. Alderman Burke, please, folks, we're very close to the end. There's a motion to lay on the table, the ordinance, to come. Alderman Lopez, please, if you give me the courtesy of finishing so that I could clarify for the body, the motion that Alderman Beal has put on the table, is that all right? Can you do that, sir? I understand, but let me finish, sir. There is a motion to lay on the table, the ordinance, that would set the date and time of the next city council meeting as February 7 at 1:30. A yes vote is to not come back on February 7 to attend to an item of unfinished business. A no vote is to come back on February 7 at 1:30. There's been a call for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can you just open up the electronic voting?
We're creating it.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Osterman.
I think I speak for all my colleagues. I think if there's a reason for us to come back, I think it would be important for us to know before we vote on this why we would be coming back. I think if there's an urgent matter before this body, all of us are willing to come back on a moment's notice, as we always shown, but if there is a reason for us to come back, I think for us to take an informed vote on this motion, I think people should be told clearly by yourself or someone else why the need to come back. And I think, I think for us to make an informed vote on this, which our constituents will want, I think we deserve the courtesy to be told why we want to come back.
There is a matter of unfinished business that was sent to the Rules Committee that needs to be advanced, and that is the consideration by this body of the com-ed franchise agreement that promises to provide the city over the life of its terms $120 million. Let me go to Alderman Lopez first and then to Alderman Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam President. As appointed.
Thank you, Madam President. As a point of information, Alderman Mitchell stated there's no unfinished business before this body. This is new business. So that is incorrect. What is the unfinished business that you're?
I, I clarify, it was, it would be new business.
No, you said it was unfinished business.
An item that was referred to the Rules Committee, Alderman Vasquez.
Just, I, I apologize because there's a lot going on. So I just, so the reason we want to have another meeting is to expedite the ComEd agreement, is that worth saying?
The, the reason is to make sure that the agreement that is time sensitive, um, comes before the body for consideration. That's correct, sir.
Yeah, I, I think I, I agree with, uh, Harry and other folks that we, we don't know about the time sensitivity. We don't have a lot of answers at all. But if, if members want to vote on speeding that up, they're feel free to.
And just as, as a clarification, sir, it's not speeding it up. It's putting it for, before the body for consideration, Alderman Vasquez. Because if it's not before the body, as you well know, since you sent it to Rules, it can't be considered.
It could be considered later.
It could be considered, um, at any time.
Right. So we don't have to speed it.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Uh, I g- I guess if, uh, if you withdraw your objection to it just going to committee to be heard, then there's no need to come back. I think that's the, that's the point of the conversation. So it's my understanding and my belief that we, we can't have a conversation about it until it gets to committee. And right now it's in Rules, which is not where it should be heard. It should be heard in the committee, but the two committees that it, the joint committee it was brought about to. So again, I guess the bar really is in your court. If you want us to come back on Tuesday to re-refer it out of committee, then we come back. Otherwise, if you pull your referral out, it just goes to committee on a regular basis. It's coming one way or the other. It's how you want it.
Anything we need to be holding off until after elections for this conversation. So I'm happy holding it as long as we need to and not speeding it up.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I, I have a, yesterday I had a briefing on this that lasted about 20 min- 20 minutes. None of my questions were answered. It was rushed. I didn't feel like, I, I don't know who worked on this or if any one of us had an input on this. I know I didn't. This is a huge deal for the city of Chicago. I think we deserve more time to hash through this whatever, 80 pages of documents, to look at this and to learn what we're doing. I, I, it's the taxpayers, it's the taxpayers deserve u- us to look at this thing. This is a huge deal, and none of us, I, I've talked to a bunch of people. Does anybody in here feel comfortable with what's in here? We just got this today. This is a huge deal, and I don't want to make sure that I'm not voting on something that's parking me- meters or the Skyway Bridge.
You're 100% right. This body absolutely needs to look at every page, understand everything that's in it so that you feel comfortable when you cast your vote. But formally, the process to initiate that con- consideration is to have it introduced into committee. And all the, just to make sure everybody's clear, because I heard a lot of conversation and consternation, we enter in things into the record so that the body can then consider it at whatever pace the body feels is appropriate. That cannot be done if we're playing parliamentary games, and we need to get this before a joint committee, which is what I, we heard feedback from the briefings, so that the entirety of the agreement can be considered in a timely and appropriate fashion. So the, as you well know, the filing isn't the voting. Sometimes things get filed, and it takes quite some time for the body to fe- feel like it's comfortable in considering.
I, I agree with you. I, I understand the procedure, Madam President, but, uh, yesterday, none of my, none of our questions were answered, and I don't know how long, there's so many questions that we have, a lot of us have in regards to this, that I think, what is the rush?
And the brief. All the more reason why we should proceed.
We should have a subject matter hearing on this thi- on this.
And, and perhaps, and perhaps that.
We didn't.
That, perhaps that will be what the committee determines, but it can't do any of those things.
I, I for one don't feel comfortable, so.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Point of clarification, can we not just have a Rules Committee meeting to reassign it? I'm curious why a special city council meeting is needed in lieu of that.
It has to be, uh, referred then. The Rules Committee certainly can meet, and I believe that Chairman Harris has scheduled a Rules Committee meeting. Then it needs to be forwarded to the appropriate committee. That's the way our rules lie, by action of the city council. If the Rules Committee mo- meets, refers it to the joint committee, all the city council would be doing on Tuesday is accepting the recommendation of the Rules Committee to refer it to the joint committee. There's no vote other than that. There's no substance. The council will have and take whatever time it believes is appropriate to consider this matter. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke. Did you have something, sir?
Uh, Madam President, I, I think I heard someone mention a special committee. Uh, I would refer, uh, the members to, uh,
Sir, if I can just interrupt, I don't think anybody mentioned.
Pardon me?
A special committee. It was a joint committee.
Well.
Which is different than a special committee issue.
Well, um, there is no reference in the rules to a joint committee, uh, but there is a reference in the rules on page 18 to, um, special committees. Special committees can be created by the council only by a resolution adopted by the affirmative vote of two thirds of the aldermen who are entitled by law to be elected. There's no reference in the rules to a joint committee. This would be a special committee, and it has not been created.
I believe you've been in a seca- city council for quite some time, correct?
I'm sorry?
I believe you've been in city council for quite some time. It is routine, certainly in my experience, both before and over the last four years, that there are sometimes joint referrals to a committee, and that's precisely what this is. This is not a special committee. And you're right, you read the rule correctly, but this is not, what's being proposed is not a special committee, but a joint committee.
Well, respectfully, um, we have a difference of opinion.
That right.
I think the rules are clear.
If you look, sir, uh, Rule 39, page 26, specifically refers to a joint, uh, committee, and the rules for, um, establishing that. Um, I don't agree with that, sir. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a point of order, we are in the midst of a roll call, and discussion should have ended. Can we get back to the vote, please?
There was a, a question by, I think, Alderman Osterman.
The rules state that there's no debate when a roll call has been called.
There was a point, there's a point of clarification.
There's no, no such thing during a roll call vote, Madam President.
There is, sir.
Someone who's been here longer than you. That is not the case.
Oh, well, there's a lot I could say about that, but I will not. I will restrain myself.
Because the rule is very clear. A roll call has been requested. Discussion should end. Can we proceed with the vote?
Sir, as you're aware, once the clerk commences a roll call, you're 100% right. But your colleagues.
You've already called for the roll call.
I'm not going to argue with you, sir.
Then call for the roll call, please, Madam President, which has been requested.
Your colleagues asked for points of clarification and discussion.
Having a debate on the merit of a ordinance.
No, we're having, we're having a discussion about what the purpose of a matter is and what the substance of a motion for, to lay it on the table would be.
Which has been called.
Any other, the Chair recognizes Alderman Secher Lopez.
Thank you, um, Madam Chair. I, um, concerned about the rushing of this contract, especially with a serious, serious, serious corruption, racketeering investigation going on. And I just learned by just right now, there was a public comment early on to discuss this issue, and I am hearing that this person was removed from the chambers alleging some sort of, some sort of, uh, misconduct or censure. I want to put on record that there was, I did not hear any kind of misconduct in the public comments today. This sets a terrible precedent in the council. If this is indeed the case that someone was removed during public comment, that is a shame. That should be definitely investigated by Inspector General and the Ethics Board. If someone got removed from this body for making a public comment on this matter, and the rushing of this contract and this kind of behavior is just unacceptable. Just reflect the record on that. Terrible precedent for the city of Chicago.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Um, so Madam President, in the interest of moving this and moving this along, I've offered up to the clerk an alternate date and time, uh, for, for March 15th, 2023. Is that a, could we?
As a time for the next regularly scheduled, uh,
Yes.
city council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Madam President.
I believe that the Chair recogni- the Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we all know we try to follow the rules in this place, but at the time, we always find ways to skirt the rules. And if you look at page 13, because I'm sure you have a book and two lawyers next to you, and with that it says, a motion to lay on the table is non-debatable. And we just had a 45-minute debate on a motion to lay something on the table, and it's non-debatable. And we got a slew of lawyers in this place, and we can't follow the rules. So now we want to skirt what the motion was. Madam President, I re-address my motion to lay it on the table.
I believe with Alderman Mitchell's new.
I have a motion on the table that supersede what he's talking about.
I believe your motion, I believe your motion is moot.
It is not moot.
It is moot, it's moot.
It is not moot.
It is moot if.
It is not. Follow the rules. I put a motion on the table. You want to ignore my motion and go straight to his? I have a motion on the floor.
So your, your motion is to lay on the table, a motion that has now been withdrawn.
Who withdrew it?
Alderman Mitchell just withdrew it.
My motion, I have to withdraw it. It's my motion, not his.
Your motion, sir, your motion is to lay something on the table that Alderman Mitchell put before the body, correct?
No.
No, it is.
No. I put the motion to lay on the table.
I understand, but your motion to let, you're laying something on the table.
That's not the base.
The thing that you're laying on the table is the motion for the ordinance that Alderman Mitchell put on the table. Is that correct? If Alderman Mitchell withdraws that motion, your motion.
No, no.
The Chair recognizes Alderman, Alderman Harris.
Um, so we, we have to look at the timeline here and when things happened. And so the motion to lay on the table came first. That makes it a moot point. Now, if after that, Alderman Mitchell wants to introduce something else, he may do so. But as for the original motion by Alderman Beal to lay on the table, that has to be.
So we are voting on a motion to lay on the table.
Correct.
A motion that has been withdrawn.
No, it is, it was not withdrawn when the motion was made.
Madam Clerk, there's a call for a roll call.
What is the roll call?
It's on, let's see.
There's a motion to lay on the table, but now withdrawn motion to come back on February 7th. A yes vote is not to come back on February 7th. A no vote is to come back on February 7th, even though that motion has been withdrawn. Go ahead. The Chair, the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin. There, I think we know what we're voting on, to lay on the table.
We're going. It's, it, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We, we not, we're not, we're not going to go there. If the man is withdrawing his motion, this is a moot point. But again, if you want, if you just, if you, if the man wants to withdraw his motion, we have withdrawn motions as a practice in the past. What is the issue here? This is, this is crazy. We look like a bunch of damn fools. This is crazy. If the man is with, withdraws motion, let him withdraw it. Fine. Do your, do your thing, man. Do it, do it.
15. Mr. Alderman Mitchell, is there a desire to have the next regularly scheduled?
I have offered up to the clerk an alternate date of March 15th for our next meeting.
Madam Clerk. And, and, but we, please read the, the ordinance, and then I'll come back to Alderman Beal. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Being ordained by the City Council of City of Chicago, Section One, the next regular meeting of the City Council of City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, March 15th, 2023, beginning at 10:00 AM in the Council Chamber on the Second Floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after this passage. Gregory Mitchell, Alderman 7th Ward.
Alderman Beal. Do you withdraw your motion to lay on the table? I just want the record to be clear.
I did already.
Okay, I want the record to be clear. All right. Alderman Mitchell.
So, so Madam, I'm gonna, with respect to the omnibus, I, I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable.
You need to, if I can stop you, sir, you need to move passage of the next, of the ordinance regarding the next regularly scheduled meeting.
So, Madam President, I move passage of, uh, hold on. I move passages in the omnibus of the, of the new city council, of the new meeting.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Now, let's go to the omnibus.
Now.
Alderman Mitchell.
All right. I ha- I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. See you in March. If not sooner.